Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the February 3rd, 2022 council meeting to order. Do we have any special intentions, Councilwoman McKinney? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor?
I'd like everybody to keep my DCO's mother, Chad Pittfield's mother, in their thoughts and prayers. She has been sick with COVID since about a month and a half now. He's been going through a lot, obviously, but also what he's been going through personally is his mother in the hospital not doing well, up and down, up and down. And yesterday morning, she actually passed away. I just want to keep Councilman Wilmont's father in our thoughts and prayers also, but Chad, I think, needs a lot of support right now.
Thank you. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to also like to ask the entire audience, the council, the administration, for prayers for a person that is, that was the wife, Ms. Evelyn Soniak, and her husband of 52 years, Mr. Gus Soniak. My, one of my first coaches or one of many of thousands of young men in Buddy Lawson, Lincoln Manor, and Susan Park were their coach. Ms. Evelyn was a teacher for over 56 years in Ibraville and Jefferson Parish. Her dedication to families, to the children like myself that would come to her home and invade her home, and she would offer up like we were her children, and since we were. She had no sons, she had a daughter, but she had a thousand sons, and we all felt that way about her. She was there, she taught at Westgate, Missouri, A.C. Alexander, GT Woods, Rulo, Washington Elementary, Clancy, and Missouri. So Evelyn will be missed, and I ask that you keep her in your thoughts, pray for Gus and his family, and we really will appreciate that from the South Kenner family. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McKinney?
Yes, I just want to reiterate for, request special intentions and prayers for the family of Councilman Wilmont. I know he's, I know what, personally, what he's going through very, very well. Just pray for him and help him get through, him and his family get through this hard and difficult time.
Thank you. For the pledge, we have Mr. Eddie Marcel with Troop 269 present. We'd like to ask if you all could come lead us in the pledge, please.
The flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman?
Prayer? I'm sorry. I skipped that. Councilwoman McKinney will lead us into prayer. My apologies.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Council President. Lord, thank you for this day and the opportunity to come together to make decisions for our community and work together for the best of Kenner. On this day, please give us direction, fortitude, and grace to deal with anything that may lay ahead. May we seek your guidance and work steadfastly in your name. Amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, we'll try that again.
Yes, sir. You have a quorum this evening? In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Under correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Simon?
Thank you, Council President. Two reports today that I'm gonna turn over to, one to Charles Alon with Recreation to give you a Recreation update, because obviously, we have some things that we're doing in Recreation, want the people of Kenner to know that as we're working through some of the Ida aftermath. And then, right after that, Councilman Segura had reached out to Entergy, Cox, and AT&amp;T for a report, and he asked me to put it under the mayor's comments, and I said that'd be fine. So we'll go right from Recreation to, I know Councilman Segura wants to jump in on the mayor comments, say a few words, and do the introductions, and I do want to thank him for doing that, because he's been working very, very closely with these entities, and one specifically on something I think everybody will be happy with, but I won't steer that thunder, I'll let him do that. But I do want to bring Charles Alon up, because we do need to talk about some recreational programs. Charles?
Hello, everyone. I'd like to start with first giving you an update on the actual gyms and field areas, park by park. Let's start with the gyms. As of this morning, with the rain that came in today, we do have some leaks and puddling of water inside Buddy Lawson Gym as well as Wood Lake. That's from today's rain. Outside of that, there is no gym, no basketball floors in Buddy Lawson, in Butch Dewey, in Susan Park, in Lincoln Manor. The Bertolino wood floor is also up as well as Wood Lake. So none of those have courts to actually participate in any recreational sports. The, the good news of this week is that both Galatus and Wentwood Gyms are ready for use for the adjacent schools. So those schools were notified, I know Councilman Brennan had, had reached out to me specifically to Wentwood, but both of those schools have been notified through Miss Denapolis, and they are able to utilize those gyms again for PE purposes. Bertolino is the only other gym that's connected to a school, again, the wood floor was completely taken up during the mitigation process, so currently, they do not have access to that gymnasium. There's also some issues on the walking track as far as bacteria, mold, et cetera, and I do not have that updated status on that track. So right now, that, that particular school, which is Alexander, I believe, is the correct one, and, and they are not able to use the gym. The ones that we could, can use, Woodward Gym currently has the gymnastics or tumbling floor, as well as the martial arts floors, and those classes are ongoing. The, again, Wentwood Gym has a sport court that has been completely put back down, and Wentwood and Galatus, now that those floors are actually available for use, we will start in, not next week, but the following, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, offering basketball free play. And that will be to Kenner residents first. So if it's an adult and they show an ID, they can identify themselves as a Kenner resident, they would get preference to use the court. If it's a child, our supervisors will ask them an address, and hopefully, it's a Kenner address. Certainly, our supervisors will work with anyone in terms of trying to accommodate them, but what we don't want to run into is have a number of 20-something-year-olds trying to take over a court when, you know, 10 or 12-year-olds are trying to get some time as well. So that's kind of where we stand on gyms. Six of the eight gyms, like I said, do not have floors as of today. And two, we now have to get Southern Cat back involved to kind of see how do we mitigate now that we have leaks coming in from a day long of rain. Regarding fields, here are the field statuses right now. Buddy Lawson is capable of being used for daylight hours. The west side, every pole along the west side, so the third baseline, those will not turn on. So that is in progress to determine, I guess, essentially, what caused that and how do we fix it. Butch Dewey is playable. There is a lot of work that still needs to be done. It's a little more cosmetic than actually affecting a field to be used. So out there, we still have East Bank Little League that'll be starting pretty soon, and Archbishop Chappelle Softball, who has already spent about $21,000 to, to change Field 2 into a softball field. So they will be playing their home games now with us here in Kenner. And I can speak from experience, because I was the athletic director at Chappelle at the time when we originally built the softball field at Bertolino. During that, during that gap, I guess, between now and, between then and now, Mal Carmel now plays at Bertolino, and Chappelle is playing at Butch Dewey as of this season. Bertolino, give you an update on the football stadium. We now have two of three quotes we've asked for, for demolition of the football press box. That needs to come down in either something rebuilt or a complete redesign of, of that home side. So that press box was pretty, it's standing, I'm not sure how, but it's standing, and the back wall of it is blown out. You can actually view into the press box from the ground level. So that press box will come down sometime shortly. We're just waiting on a third quote and then determine that from, from that point on. Continuing at Bertolino, every single field has some kind of damage, whether it's to foul ball netting, outfield fencing, to lights, light poles, dugouts. So it's a tremendous amount of, of damage that still needs to be actually repaired at Musbertolino Playground. Again, the gym has no floor as well. At Susan Park, the field itself is playable. There are some lighting issues, which I've, I've spoken with our field services guys, and they have our contractor Blocher that's circling around different playgrounds and redirecting lights towards fields. So Susan Park could probably work to an extent, depends on what they're gonna do out there, if they're playing at night or until we get daylight savings. But definitely at all the parks, there's gonna be a tremendous amount of individual bulbs on the towers that are gonna have to be redirected towards fields, so that safe, we could safely play at night, especially if it's baseball. Lincoln Manor has a tremendous amount of damage between lights that are out, light poles that are significantly leaning, fencing down, and again, even though light poles that are standing, we have bulbs that need to be redirected towards fields. Green Lawn is usable, the, the lighting there does work. In fact, some poles that we all believe were leaning to an extent pre-storm seem to be more upright today. So that playground is usable, including at night. The outfield fence does need to be removed and replaced, but other than that, Green Lawn is, is able to be used outside of their concession stand. The concession stand is on the list for demolition. Galatus, we do need to replace a good bit. The outside metal awning, the coverall over the bleachers to the main baseball field, the press box was blown into pieces, and the outfield fence would need to be completely replaced. The actual fields, I mean, at anywhere with some tend to love and care, we could get the fields playable, but it's the, it's the things that are around each field that are holding us up at certain locations, or at many locations. Wentwood, it's close to being usable. The front field, that's approximately the size of a football field, is certainly usable. There are some lights that are gonna be, again, redirected and bulbs replaced, and there's also some fencing that needs to happen. We're in current discussions with Kenner Discovery, who would like to play baseball at the Big Diamond there at Wentwood. So we have one of the guys from Field Services who's very good at working on fields, who's working on that field to get it leveled off. It's not a place that you would want to put a team on and take a bad bounce and hit someone, you know, irregular in the face or something like that. Wood Lake, two fields on the north side are usable, on the north side of West Esplanade, and, and we do have a number of travel organizations looking for rentals to use, but priority will be to our Recreation Department. As we near baseball season in April and May and start registrations for that in March, and start our coaching, our volunteer coaching process of them now submitting information to us, which goes to our city human resources for background checks, that will all start in March, so that when we open up registrations, we have a good, good amount of people who want to volunteer and coach baseball and softball. And also, in that same spring period, we're gonna introduce beach volleyball at Coconut Beach in a partnership with them. That will be for a little older group, probably 10 and up, because they simply can't lower nets far enough to get down to four and five-year-olds. There's, it's just not, not possible. But what we can do is offer Fundamentals Camp also at Coconut, so that they can actually start learning the sport, and then later on, be able to play on the actual courts. Gave you an update about today's rain. Again, Buddy Lawson and Wood Lake Gyms have pockets of water on the cement floors. And now to give you, I guess, some of the information that's coming pretty soon, all of you should be receiving through our constant contact that Recreation uses, you should receive emails, at least one, minimum of one a month, which includes photos, graphics, things we put out on other social media to promote programs, and that goes to about 8,700 email addresses. And these came from people who have registered in our rec desk software over the last three to four years. So that's where we found, we gathered those email addresses. So that's a great way, rather than people, some people are on Facebook, some aren't, some go to the website, some don't. This is reaching people who, at some point in time in the last three to four years, have been directly involved in registering their kids in our rec program. This information is going directly to them. So what we have coming up, utilizing Galatus and Wentwood Gyms, we are gonna start offering fitness classes, as well as introducing kids and adult cornhole, and we're gonna use the insides of those two gyms to do those programs. We will also be looking at the possibility of having an adult night for volleyball at one of those facilities, either Galatus or Wentwood. And again, like I said, starting on February 15th, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we will offer basketball free play at both of those facilities. In Galatus, at the meeting room, one of the meeting rooms in Galatus, we will begin to offer adult and kids art classes. Those will run Monday through Thursday, and so some of those nights will have free play going on in the gym, as well as the art classes in the meeting room. At Wentwood, again, we've, we've been talking with Kenner Discovery for baseball and softball. That will be the site, the other site for free play basketball. At Wood Lake, we have two fields available for either our rec program and/or to rent for organizations that are looking for fields for practice. Green Lawn, we have the entire field available. And our kickball, which started out with over 130 kids registered, I do want to say that back in December, when that began, opening week went fabulous. The next two weeks, we had multiple, like four or five people in Recreation that were directly out there at kickball who came down with COVID. So we, we had to shift two weeks there, and then we got caught up in, in one week of weather. So when we came back, the original intention was to have three weeks prior to Christmas and come back with three weeks in January. So when we came back, what had happened was another rain out. So to try and make up for that, rather than continue onto Saturdays and end up running right into Mardi Gras, we decided to double up and offered on Tuesday and Thursday nights, and we changed the venue to Bertolino Stadium, where we knew that turning the lights on was completely green-lighted by everyone involved. So we had two nights, Tuesday and Thursday, and then, obviously, with tonight's rain, we did call it off. This was gonna be our awards night tonight. So we're gonna have Tuesday and Thursday next week, giving out awards on Thursday night when we complete play. I went over Butch Dewey. Again, we'll have, in March, we'll have three of those fields occupied by East Bank Little League and one by Archbishop Chappelle Softball. All of those organizations, by the way, as part of their agreement, they are going to be offering in their off-seasons camps and clinics that will be free to Kenner citizens, Kenner kids. So we're trying to get them involved as a, not only to grow the game, but also offer things outside of our normal rec season, that they can kind of witness kids who are at an age level or, or a skill level better than where they are, and maybe learn from kids closer to their age, and I think that's a valuable experience. I'll give you a quick example. This Saturday, as well as next Saturday, we're kicking off a brand-new version of Kenner Recreation Soccer. And we have 91 kids coming this Saturday at Musbertolino Stadium, and we have 87 so far registered for the 12th. And not only do we have our local coaches who are gonna be there, but I give you a great example of why I think it's so valuable to get some young folks, and it's nothing taking away from, from our veterans that have been around a long time, but the value. By sending that email out, it got in the hands of a lady, Brakell Tibbs. She is a Kenner kid who now plays college soccer at Southern University. She ended up calling me from receiving that email about these upcoming clinics, and she has volunteered to come down the next two Saturdays and coach. And I think the value of our Kenner youth, who are going, going to be out there, to be able to get some instruction from someone who's, you know, not 40, 50 years old, but somebody who's 20, and playing at the college level, that is a valuable resource to us, and we need to utilize that more often. We have a number of kids who have gone on to play major college football, basketball, baseball, and now soccer, that are Kenner kids that came through the program, and I think that's just gonna be a powerful tool for us as we try and rebuild this thing. It's gonna take a little time. It's not gonna happen overnight, but we have to have a plan, we have to continue with, with executing that plan. Again, in the spring, baseball, softball, beach volleyball, and also dog obedience classes will return in the spring. We have a number of, of other leisure activities. There's a Valentine's Day Kids Night Out that'll be at Woodward Gym on February 11th. We have the first crew to Kenner. This is gonna be, just like you see the kids with the wagon float parades at their schools, this was advertised as a wagon float, they can walk if they're a little older, but a wagon float parade that we will do at Kenner City Park on February 19th. And we have a number of other special events we have not advertised yet that are gonna be coming up, and those are gonna really be geared to the kids, things like sock hops, craft nights, activity nights, and those will be, some will be in the gym, some will be outside using facilities. Any questions?
Charles?
Yes, sir.
On the Bertolino press box?
Yes, sir.
I know that you and I and Deborah have looked at containers and stuff like that for press box. Is that part of the process, on the bid process, for that stadium?
What we have now is, is we're getting, we're getting quotes for the demolition only.
Oh, okay.
When it goes out later on, I'm sure, as a, as a full project, then certainly, that would be something to entertain as far as how do we, how do we rebuild this?
Okay, so it's just demolition right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Director, for that. A couple of meetings ago, you and I were supposed to get together to, to visit all of the facilities in District 1. I realize you had some challenges, and I hope you're doing, everything is better for that sake, but I would like to schedule that again, to be able to visit Buddy Lawson, Lincoln Manor, and Susan Park on the playgrounds and the gym.
And I, I did send, the next day, I sent you three emails that were the reports on each of those facilities, as well as photos. It was about 12 to 15 photos of each facility, so that you would see that until we could reschedule that, that in-person.
Well, my computer is still inactive, I have to get it fixed by the IT people, but thanks for the photos, but the, the physical.
No, I understand. I just wanted to get you something in your hands until we reschedule.
And I appreciate that, and please, going in the future, please always give me that information, but it is important for me physically to go walk in and to see, to be able to explain to the people who I represent about the facility, because as you can see, the weather is not conducive to outdoors. So we realize now at Buddy Lawson, Lincoln, and Susan, the fields are challenging, but the gyms still are not up to par, because speaking as an athlete from the Kenner Recreation Department, children and everything, the gym is their attraction. If the gym is active, everything else will flow towards that. So the floors have not been dealt with in over, I don't know, a month or even longer, and I did ask for a estimate of when it will be completed.
I don't, I don't know that answer.
That is, that is something we gotta know. I mean, we just can't just simply not have a date for that. We have to have some plan, like you said, a plan would be to have a schedule of when it's gonna be completed.
I'm, I'm sure we would have that schedule once we know what we're, what's coming back from insurance and FEMA.
Excuse me, Mr. Lai. Pardon me.
I don't know.
Ms. Foshee?
Try it. There you go.
Sing into it.
That, I, that, he just answered the question. By the time I fiddle with my microphone, until we get the insurance response, we can't repair much of anything. So we can do the fields with our own work and with our own labor, but the things that require something bigger than that, as you also heard about Buddy Lawson, we thought at least was stabilized, and the roof sprung a leak today, so we have the mitigation contractor coming back out to work on that. So as soon as we know, and I think, and if you don't, if you didn't, if your computer's not working, then you didn't get this email today either, but it is the, the information update from the insurance, from the public adjuster, that we should hear by mid-March about the undisputed insured amount. So mid-March is when we will know what we are getting paid, and with that, we'll then be in a position to plan future work.
Well, I can appreciate that, Ms. Foshee, and my point is, we have received some insurance money, have we not, in some capacities?
I'll just talk really loud? It might be working now? Okay. One of the issues is we're waiting on FEMA, so we're, we're hoping that they're gonna schedule some site visits within 30 days. So things like fields and stuff, they don't really need to see, but when we're actually talking about infrastructure and gyms, they're gonna have to come out and do an assessment on their own, so that's part of it. So once we get that insurance report that they can match up, so what FEMA does is they come in, they want to see your insurance report for that building, and then they go through the building also, and they do an assessment. So it is a process, it's definitely a priority. We're pushing FEMA, they reached out and said that they would be in the city within the next 30 days, so we're definitely gonna have some recreation priority items to put on the list.
Well, again, and, and I don't mean to press, but I do mean to press, we have received some insurance, we have done some things, we have taken a position to correct some things based on submitting the cost to FEMA to get reimbursed. So in my opinion, this would be something, because listening to the director, all of the different facilities that they will have activities, there is no activity south of Veterans Highway for Buddy Lawson, Lincoln Manor, and Susan. There's nothing there. So to say we don't have a plan, to say we don't have an idea, it's not, it's not good. It's not good for the children. Listen, I realize what we're going through, but we have to have a plan, we have to dedicate some monies. If it's the floor, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how much, how much is it, the entire floor or whatever, that's why I want to see. The roof, we've played forever with the roof leaking. When it rained, we stopped playing. When it's, when it's not raining, we, we play. If it rains, we shut it down. So if the floor is addressed and it hasn't been replaced, we have to get a plan, because like I said, we have soccer, corn holds, whatever, all that is, those are not the, the activities for most of the men, the young boys and young ladies at Buddy Lawson, Lincoln, and Susan, that they are really attentive to. I mean, they are attentive to the gym, because like I said, it brings so much out. So we have to get a plan, get a cost, to fix the floors, to let the children start coming in. Right now, outdoors is not a, is not something that we want to do, because it's too, the weather is, it's just not working. It's too cold, and when I was playing a lot, we didn't worry about this time of the year, but we were in the gym. So I realize you, you have challenges, but I, but it's important for us to start looking at this, and not only at Buddy Lawson, Lincoln, and Susan, but all the other gyms as well. But there is nothing, nothing at any of those facilities for the children to do, and that is not right.
I don't know what we can do in a gym when there's, there's no accessibility to the gym. There's sheet rock cut out in offices, there's no floor in the gym, I don't know what we're supposed to do in there.
No, no, we can't do anything without the flooring. We need to get the flooring, like I said, to be able to do it.
And I guarantee I have a plan to have, have activities in those gyms as soon as we can get the floor. Yes, sir?
Yeah, but I, I realize that, but we need a time, we need a timeframe. We just can't say we have a plan. We have to assess.
I don't, I don't do the repairs, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Director, and please don't take this personal, you are the director, it is your job, if you don't know.
Facility maintenance does not fall onto me, sir.
Director, you are the director. If you don't know the answer, ask somebody to supply that. I'm not asking you to give me the answer, but you have the.
Councilman Carroll? I think the mayor's trying to.
Well, let me finish my thoughts with, with the director. After you have the ability to ask someone, how long will it take, how much will it cost, and then you will know, and then all of us will know. That is what I'm asking you, to get that information.
And my answer, my answer. And my answer, my answer at, today, would be exactly what Ms. Herring answered, that until FEMA, this is what I've been told in every meeting I've been in, until FEMA and until insurance comes back with the amounts that we're looking at per playground, that's when we know how much money we have to spend to do the repairs necessary.
Can we not?
So until that happens, I don't know the timeframe. I would be a complete guess.
Okay. You, you should be able to guess, even if you have to guess, but are you capable of getting an assessment of how much it costs to repair the floors? Just to get a, a price?
A price for a new floor is eighty thousand dollars.
There you go. So just that fast, you have it. So all three gyms, to be able to get a price for all of them, if we're talking about the whole floors? Because my concern is, again, and I hate to be redundant, nothing is going on at these facilities. That is not acceptable on any level.
Okay.
For the people who vote, pay taxes, in the city of Kenner, so...
So to expedite, I guess, until money comes in, I mean, the only other options we have is to request donations or anything else.
No, that's not, that's not an option to request donations. So the mayor, the mayor would like to say something.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to step in. I got two asks for you. You asking the Director something, that's fine. I'm gonna ask you, two weeks ago, we sent out an email or a message to make sure the computers come in, yours needs to come in, so that's the first ask, that we can have a better rapport with you. The second ask is, can you schedule something with the Director to go see it yourself? And also, let us educate you on, we have to wait for FEMA. We're wait, we're waiting for FEMA to come in. We would love to do that if we could. If we could've done that, we could've done that in a few, um, buildings and get some things repaired. It is a process for FEMA, so let's just, let us get back on the phone with FEMA and get a better timeline of when they're coming in so they can do that, because we can't spend money without FEMA looking at it, is my understanding. If Liz has a bet, Liz, if I'm saying something wrong, please correct me, but my understanding is we have to wait for FEMA. So we are trying, we're treating every gym, every facility, just the same, Councilman, but we need to work with you, you need to work with us too, to get your computer straight. He's telling me it's two weeks ago, we gotta get that straight. And also, can you please set up something, since it's not working right now, before this council meeting's over with, go off to the si- go off to the side, um, Mr. Charles, with Councilman Carroll, and set up a date so you can see it, Greg? You need to see it.
Yeah.
That's all I'm asking for. So, and I think you have a better idea of it.
That is, that is...
Because we're, we're kinda wasting time, because it's something we can't do. We can't do what you're asking without you seeing it and us getting in there to get, get FEMA in there to get it straight.
Well...
It's the process.
I, I think, I think we are never wasting time if we are talking about a solution.
But, but it's not a solution. Your, your, your statement is not a solution, right?
We're talking about getting a solution. That's all I'm asking.
Right. We're talking about FEMA. We're waiting on FEMA.
Okay, my computer is not working, but I have a cellphone. So if my computer isn't working, I could be called. I could be, I could text, text me.
That's fine, but let's do it tonight. Before y'all leave, let's do it tonight.
Before I leave...
Absolutely. He's gonna see you before, Charles, see him before you leave.
To see all those gyms, but, but again, it is important to realize, we are talking, we have done a number of things before FEMA have reimbursed us to repair things. So that is not, that is something we're not ho- if that was the case, we would not be in here.
Where, where have we done that at? Where have we done something?
We have made purchases for things that we have not been reimbursed yet from FEMA. That's what I'm saying.
So there's a, there's a difference between...
There's a difference. You're talking about repairs and purchases.
Yeah, so there's permanent repairs, which is when you have to wait for FEMA to come out and assess. So there are certain things that you can do as an emergency response measure, um, temporary location, stuff like that, but there, there is a process, and, and we're working with FEMA, they, they understand the urgency the city has. Um, we're expecting, we're hoping that they're gonna schedule site visits for February twenty-second, that week, that week of February twenty-second. So, um, obviously, our priority is City Hall. We all wanna get back there, so that's gonna be the top of the list for them to come out. Um, but like I said, we're, I'm working with Charles to identify the priority for recreation. So we, we do have a plan. I hear what you're saying, I understand, but we do have a plan, but we have to wait for FEMA to come in so we don't jeopardize funding.
Well, I, I don't totally agree with that, but...
Okay, that's fine.
That's your opinion, but there is a, the priority for me are the children of District One. That is a priority. So whatever means we have to do to prioritize those facilities, I think we should do it. We should, we should look outside of the box to do something, because to say that we don't know how much it's gonna cost to some, to, to fix it, how long it's gonna take, that is not much of a plan, in my opinion. So that, that is what I would like. How much it's gonna cost, how long it's gonna take to get these facilities up to par to, to allow activities at the District One for their, because they have nothing right now. Nothing. So that is what, when you and I, uh, I can schedule something so we can meet...
Sure.
I have other ideas as it relates to programs for the children besides, you know, what, what has been addressed. There could be some other things, but I'd like to be a part of that, because, you know, I have some experience working, uh, as, as, as an athlete, as a, working at the gym, within Recreation Assistant Director, and from living in District One my entire life. Uh, what, what is it, or some of the, some of the things that the children like to do? So I think I can give some support to, to you for that, so I look forward to us scheduling that...
Yep.
And moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mr. Charles Delaney. Mayor?
I'm gonna pass it on to Councilman, um, Mike Segura to introduce our guest. I believe there's three of them, Entergy, AT&amp;T, and also, um, Cox. Mike?
Thank you, uh, Council President, Mayor. Uh, you know, for, obviously, all of ours terms up here, we, we have to work with our utility companies and stay, uh, in touch with them on a regular basis, but obviously, since the hurricane, we've been, uh, speaking, I know I have on a more regular basis, with each of the utilities, to discuss their plans, their, uh, restoration, uh, timetables, and, um, so I had them come tonight to also give us an update on where they're at. So I'll start with Cox, uh, Ms. Kristin Legas, Christina Legas.
Uh, thanks for the opportunity to, um, appear before you today. I think the last time I was here was mid-hurricane restoration. Since that time, Cox has been in business-as-usual status since late September, um, and we have also worked to handle any lingering issues, whether they're cable drops or issues that are occurring with low-hanging wires or neighborhood issues. Um, I know we work closely with all of you to handle those issues. Um, at this time, it's February, and as the year goes forward, we will revisit our hurricane preparedness and responsive plans, and we'll be happy to share with you those and ensure that we're aligned as we, um, approach the next hurricane season. Other than that, I just wanna reiterate that I'm here to support all of you. If things come up, please call me, email me, text me. We will ensure we can get your, our teams, um, out to the locations that they're needed, um, to assist. And so at this time, if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to take those.
Yeah, well, uh, in line with what you said about your restoration for your lines, particularly with drop lines, hanging lines, um, I'm looking for some better detailed timelines, because I do still see, um, a lot of cable hanging, uh, wrapped around poles where they broke away from houses, and these folks probably had not had cable service anymore, so when the, the drops broke away from their house, they're just hanging, so they're not complaining that they don't have service. So how are those types of, of, uh, needs being looked at? Is there someone that drives around to spot them and then y'all schedule it for a cleanup?
So if it's hurricane-related, we have completed anything that was put into this system that we tracked and, uh, followed throughout the restoration period. But as you all know, as providers are out there making repairs, at times, things can, um, fall or get lower, like the lines that you're referring to. And so, you know, if that is the case, we are happy to send someone out there, um, whether it comes from the constituent themselves or if it comes from your office, um, we can work together. A lot of times that, um, all the providers will be informed and will work together to identify whose lines they are and kind of proceed in that manner.
Okay, well, again, but I, I, like I said, I, I can drive around, and I'm sure everyone else drives their districts, and we can all see wires hanging. Uh, I'm just not sure that, um, if you're saying you would like for us to make these notations and get back with y'all, I'm just looking for some more aggressiveness on y'all's part to go out, uh, and find these, I mean, I, I've seen it before the hurricane where apparently a, a server, someone decided they didn't want Cox anymore, and for some reason, the line is cut between the house and the pole, so now it's just a hanging wire. Um, now I see wires that have broke from the house, the, the drop lines, and they're just, I wrapped one around a post the other day, 'cause it was hanging across a sidewalk. So those are the kind of services I'm looking to see what y'all's plan is to address.
Sure, and I didn't mean to imply that it's, uh, your responsibility to let us know, um, just that if you do let us know, we will go out there. Um, I can certainly revisit with our teams to understand how much lingering issues are out there, if we can kind of form a plan to see, you know, if there's any remaining work that, uh, in concentrated areas. We'll work to, we'll work internally to address that, for sure.
And, uh, I, I kinda take it, 'cause I don't get any, uh, requests from residents anymore asking to get their service restarted if they did have service and lost it, so it appears that y'all have gotten back all of the service to the residents that did have subscriptions with y'all.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, before, anybody else have any questions for her?
Thank you. Councilman Wilmore?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I have the same issues as Councilman Segura. I just, I, I see wires hanging, and there, there are actually a, a fair amount of them wrapped around the telephone poles and so forth. It's very unsightly, and it's, it's, it's a reminder, of course, of the past events we had, and it certainly would be good that, and as Councilman Segura said, that we have some type of aggressive action upon, by, uh, Cox and/or, I guess it might even be AT&amp;T in some instances. I'm not for sure who, whose wires they are, but if we can look at that and make it a part of, of trying to make it, uh, detach them, uh, remove them, whatever, needs to be done, because it's, uh, and again, it's, it's storm effects, and we need that taken care of, so...
Absolutely. I'll have, I'll have a meeting internally, and I can respond to all of you to let you know what, um, what plans we have moving forward.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Brannigan?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Christina, I just wanna thank you. Uh, you get a lot of, uh, text messages from me, uh, in regards to people that are out, and I had one lady that was texting me every day. Now, this is back when, closer to when the storm hit, uh, because her internet was out, and I told her, I said, "Text me every day in the early afternoon." She did that. Finally, the internet got back on. She was scared to text me to tell me that it was back on, but I wanna thank you for being, you know, hands-on and, uh, getting the things done that we need to get done.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you again for coming today. We appreciate the support. Uh, I, I guess I'd like to ask, is there anything that myself and the council can do to, to help support you? Because I see it as two different things, the services for Cox within the people, you know, particularly in District One, that hasn't been a big, you know, say that it's not coming on, you die, you guys did a great job, but there is a little lag on fixing hanging wires and stuff like that. That is a more of a concern. So is there something that, that we can do to maybe, uh, set up an email or something that we can, can send the information, so that way you, you will know from us what areas, uh, if there has not been an assessment, that we should be able to give to you, and then there's a, you know, a log of it to see how long it's been addressed, uh, how long it's gonna take to get addressed? Is there something we can do?
Sure, you absolutely can email me, and I can send our crews out there if you have a specific location, if you wanna bring, bring that information to me, I'm the contact for that, and we can handle it that way. Um, but as the other council members mentioned, I, I think they're asking for a more holistic view across Kenner, and so we can do that as well.
Yeah, may I have your card?
Sure, yes.
Uh, and the email address that we should email you to, is that your card?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, if you could give that to the council clerk, maybe they could copy that.
Absolutely, and I can, I could also send a follow-up email tomorrow.
All right, if there's nobody else with, uh, Cox. Christina, I do wanna again thank you.
No, I, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Thank you. And if you said this, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify this. If for some reason we give an address to you or send it to Cox, and you all go out there, a hanging wire or an issue of that sort, and identify it's not Cox, it's either Entergy or it's AT&amp;T, do you all...
We do communicate. Usually what will happen, if it's not a Cox line, we'll reach out to one of the other providers, letting them know, um, and our construction and other crews do that as well. They coordinate pretty well together.
And I couldn't, I, the, you said something earlier, and I, 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 I just wanted to clarify that, so thank you. Thank you for your work. Councilman?
Yes, thank you. Again, like I said, it, uh, you, as you mentioned, yeah, when I send you, just like anybody, I'm sure y'all get on it right away, 'cause I know I sent you some hanging wires across the street recently, and they were fixed quickly, but some of these others are just, they're just not in a safety phase, they're just hanging, so that's where we're looking, as Councilman Wilmore said, just to clean up the city's look. And I know in a few minutes, when I get Mr. Hamby up here, we'll talk about the engine. Y'all all seem to understand that acronym, but I don't think the engine works, so, uh, we'll get to that in a, in a little bit, but thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, next, I'll have to call Mr. Eric Jones with AT&amp;T.
Council President, distinguished counsel, Mayor, thank you for this opportunity to, to present this evening. Now, I also wanna say thank you. I remember the last time we were all here together, I asked that, uh, at least let me go before Patrick, since he is always the keynote speaker, and he, he closes this thing out, talking about the Super Bowl and all those type of things like that, and so we'll let him kind of, kind of finish with that at the end. Patrick and I, we also have a pact, uh, that I'm, you know, we'll definitely let him do so, but I was gonna talk about the engines process a bit, uh, this, this evening, and, uh, he'll come home, come back and be our cleanup hitter around that. Um, again, thank you for the opportunity. I'll just say, uh, uh, immediately after the storm, we dispatched our, uh, our disaster recovery team, uh, with drones, amphibious vehicles, uh, personnel on the ground. You know, you know, today I wanna really emphasize on pole viability, and that's, that'll be the primary thing I, I like to talk about today and definitely answer anything, because I think that's one that has lingered on, and it has been an issue, you know, not only here in Kenner, but throughout Jefferson Parish, as we've talked about. Uh, in doing so, you know, we were able to identify and replace, uh, over twenty-two-hundred damaged poles. Well, think about the number of poles that we have total, and again, I don't have a specific number here in, in Kenner, but throughout the storm, somewhere around twenty-thousand and upward Jefferson Parish that, that, that we, that we own, um, which is about, you know, twenty to twenty-five percent of energy owns the rest. So we were able to replace and identify about twenty-two-hundred poles during, during the storm. Uh, we continuously conduct ongoing inspections, uh, random quality inspections, as our technicians work in the field, uh, as they climb poles, as they work in the air. Uh, part of the, the plan here is to identify poles to the left and to the right to inspect. We have a system in place called a bad plank addition. They enter those, those poles into the, into the system, uh, we get crews out there to start the, uh, the replacement process on those poles. Uh, and so again, safety is paramount. Uh, safety for the constituents, uh, for the visitors of Kenner, as well as for our, Safety for the constituents, for the visitors of Kenner, as well as for your residents. And we ask that to contact AT&amp;T. You know, as I was in my past meeting, I was asked once to replace all leaning poles, and I just wanted to make sure I addressed that. Leaning poles do not necessarily constitute a hazardous pole. There's weight requirements, there's also type of engineering that goes into play to say, okay, this is actually a hazardous pole, or, you know, if the cable's hanging so low where it becomes a hazard to pass the buyer's traffic, et cetera. If someone does identify a pole that they are concerned with, we ask them to reach out to AT&amp;T, or not just a pole or wire, to call us at 1-800-288-2020. Again, that's not to say that, you know, we're going to be reactive in this mode here, just as you asked, Christina. We do have managers in the field on a daily basis that conduct quality inspections, our technicians conduct quality inspections, and we're looking for opportunities. And again, if it's not us, I can't necessarily say on those quality inspections that we will reach out, the manager will reach out to Cox. But of course, if any of the council members, the mayor, Deborah calls, you know, we definitely coordinate between the different companies to make sure we get that in the right hands. I also ask to constituents, you know, not to try to make your own assessment on the pole. If you think it's bad, just give us a call. I've seen in certain situations, not here in Kenner, where someone tried to brace a pole with a two-by-four because they thought it was dangerous. We ask not to do that. Again, reach out to AT&amp;T, let the professionals do the assessment and make the necessary repairs. Finally, I'd like to just kind of talk about the engines process. As Councilman Segura mentioned, that's the national joint transfer process between, you know, utility companies. You know, it's not a perfect system, but it is what we have. And, you know, I had a picture that I was going to show, I displayed at one of the other meetings, where, you know, typically at the top, you know, and not typically, always at the top, if attached, you'll see power, you'll have, you know, secondary, primary, that's Patrick's expertise, then, you know, you can have some other attachments, whether they be light poles, DOTD wires for signs, then you'll see a Cox or cable wire, and AT&amp;T is typically always on the bottom. And, you know, as I've gone through various places throughout the city of Kenner, Councilman Segura, when we first met, started talking, we talked about those double poles, in some cases even triple poles that we saw out in the field. And so those are situations where the engines process, the attachers, you know, for some reason or another, the communication flow has not gone through. Again, engines is a system where, you know, you put it in, either first, a new pole is placed, if it's an AT&amp;T pole, once that new pole is placed, we identify the power company saying the new pole is placed, and power is always the first to go. And so after power goes, it comes right on down the line. If there is a light or if there is a third party that does not use the engines process, typically that's kind of when, you know, you see the process kind of slow down or even break down. A typical process would go, power would go first, they'll start sawing the pole down. If it's just the three of us attached that's here today, Cox Cable would go next, they'll saw it down, the last one on the pole would be AT&amp;T, then we will come and replace the pole and, I'm sorry, remove the pole if it belongs to us. Again, some other things, I know here in Old Jefferson, there was some Christmas lights on a pole. You know, sometimes we have to reach out to the city, not saying that the city is the reason for the delay by no means, but, you know, sometimes it requires manual intervention. And so, again, that's the engines process. We all use it. It's not perfect, but it is what we have to communicate to let the other provider know that they are next to go. At this point, our national disaster recovery team has disbanded. They finished the work mid to late November. All poles identified, damages that were identified and placed in the system are complete. But again, that does not mean there could be something on some backstreets that we've knocked out. So that ends my presentation today. What questions or comments do you have for me?
Well, I'll start with, again, the same summary for Cox is, AT&amp;T also has hanging lines, drop lines, that people have abandoned because they don't need a landline to their house, and if those lines get cut, broke, dislodged from the house, they're just hanging. They're either hanging in between poles because the house is not right by a pole, or they're wrapping it right now to get wrapped around the poles just to get them out the way. So that's the same concept that I was talking with Cox to say, what is a plan for AT&amp;T to identify, have someone ride the streets, I guess, and, okay, that's our line, let's get up there and disconnect it and clean it up because all that hanging wire is becoming an eyesore.
Yeah, so that is a business-as-usual process and the local field managers, we have, you know, a few, whether they're network or construction, they do that here in the city of Kenner. I know personally, you know, I've gone out with them to do ride days and I've seen it and we've replaced several. Not to say that there are not any that belong to AT&amp;T that are out there, but that is a regular process. And so I would ask again, just as Christina, and again, I know this is not your responsibility, but if any constituent has any concerns or council members, do reach out, and we will dispatch out immediately to make sure we address that. But what is our plan? You know, our plan is, you know, for the managers to continue to do their quality inspections, their rides, and, you know, reviewing the streets, our cable runs in the city of Kenner to identify any bad plant conditions.
Okay, and in closing, but you've covered it a lot already, was those multiple poles that, you know, I gave you a list and still trying to get some of those, you know, removed, so let's pay attention to that, please.
Absolutely.
Councilman Brannigan.
Thank you, Council President. Would I be able to get one of your cards? Some of my contacts in my phone went away and I'm trying to reload everything.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would say, I know we've been in contact, so, but yes, you can make sure you have my contact information.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman McKenney.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Jones, for coming here and speaking about, and my question is with relation to AT&amp;T service. So I know you said that the National Disaster Team ended or, you know, disbanded in mid-November. Is, at this time, is all, I know there's continuous work that's obviously going on in terms of fiber optic cables, but is AT&amp;T service up to operationally 100% at this time? Would you say that, you know, obviously give or take a day or, you know, connectivity issue here or there?
So yes, all storm-related repairs have been made. You know, we receive trouble reports on a daily basis, you know, whether it's just, you know, normal wear and tear, damages, equipment, and so we do carry a number of repairs, and so, yes, all storm-related repairs are complete.
Okay.
And also we have lots of work going on within the city of Kenner. You mentioned fiber optics, so there's a lot of work going on in Kenner around that area, and there will be a lot of work, well, the foreseeable future as well.
Okay, can you talk a little, I guess, just talk a little bit about, you know, are you replacing wires or is it new? Or what, I guess, just for the general public to know about that.
So currently, we have an expansive fiber deployment that's going on within the city of Kenner, throughout Jefferson Parish. You know, we've been working with Public Works, you know, Chad in his absence, the mayor, Deborah, to make this happen. So I'm pleased of the fiber deployment plan. You know, I don't have the numbers in front of me as far as the number of living units that we're going to surpass, didn't come prepared to discuss that number tonight, but yes, this is all fiber service that we're delivering to the home. We get speeds, you know, we just recently announced for some services up to five gigabits. And so again, it's important that we provide these services to ensure that we provide access for the city of Kenner and also work with the residents to adopt, you know, these services. So we're laser-focused as a company to bridge the digital divide and close the homework gap.
Do you think you could send me that information, some information about the deployment plan? It's not urgent, but just to have that information whenever it's available.
Out of all due respect, I know we can communicate it. As far as the actual plans, the map, you know, it is proprietary information, but I'll be more than willing to have a discussion about numbers, some locations, if you have some concerns or questions around about where we're deploying.
Okay, yes, I mean, any information that you can share.
And the reason why we just don't put that out there, it's competitive here.
Right.
You know, not just, you know, from a landline perspective, wireless providers as well are here trying to deploy broadband services through their cell service as well.
Right, yeah, and just, I mean, I guess the general idea, I don't need, you know, specific information, that's just a general thing. Is it like, is it certain parts or is it throughout? You know, just those kind of questions, but we can talk offline.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you.
Councilman Segura.
Okay, and again, before we close, I do want to wrap up with one thing that we last talked about several days ago. This permitting process that you were explaining that gets slowed down, and this is going to, City Attorney, CAO, we discussed an issue, and it was brought to my attention by Mr. Jones, that some work that they need to get done in the city of Kenner, which they come get our permit, but they also have to go to Jefferson Parish to get a permit to do work in Kenner?
Yes, yes, that is indeed the case.
Well, that's, as I told you, I'm going to ask that question, so I'm asking kind of them to kind of fill in and say, remember I said, I don't think that that's necessary for Jefferson Parish to give you a permit to do work in the city of Kenner. So I'm kind of asking them to, if you don't know the answer right now, we just need to look into this because it does slow down some of their work in Kenner.
I, exactly, I don't know the answer to that question, but Mr. Jones, you've actually been in touch with our outside counsel?
Yes, Liz.
Yes, so if you have some concerns.
Joyce, please speak in your microphone.
I'm sorry, if you have some concerns legally, reach out to Elizabeth Lambert, and I'm on that email as well, so if there's some issue, just let us know next week and we can start looking into that on Monday.
Not to pick a fight, I don't have any concerns.
He didn't have any, I had an issue.
I just want to be clear, yeah, I just want to be clear.
Because as I was, as we were talking and asking about work to be done in Kenner, he was explaining he had to go to the parish to get a permit to do work in Kenner, and I just wasn't clear as to what that was for. What did he need, a parish permit to do work?
I'll look into that and I'll let you know, sir, next week.
I think some of the infrastructure is in the rights of way that actually are property owned by the parish along the banks of the canal, so there may be some that do require it because they're the property owner. But again, if you would let me know too, when you find out if it's in every case, they have to get two permits or just in the case where the parish is the actual record owner.
Okay, I'll let you all know.
All right, well, we'll try to clear that up and make it faster for you. But anyway, I want to thank you, Mr. Jones, for coming and giving your update, and like I said, we'll try to keep working on those hanging wires and double poles.
Absolutely, you have my commitment, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, not that we need an update on the Super Bowl, but Mr. Hamby, would you please come up and, and Mr. Hamby with Energy is going to have same, he's going to give us a report, but one more specific report goes back, you know, some time now that I have asked for, and that is, why do we have to pay a monthly fee for the streetlights that we don't have lights working? We talked about this in the past and there was some discussion about how do we figure out, you know, a plan to say what kind of credit we can get or how do we deal with the fact that we're paying per light, but if those lights aren't working because either the bulbs are out or in this case, we have a lot of streetlights that have not been replaced since the hurricane, so they're still on the billing record. So I know you have something to talk about on that, so go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm going to focus, like you said, or Patrick Hamby, sorry, on behalf of Entergy Louisiana, I'm going to focus on the streetlights first, and if you do have any questions on the engines, the national joint utility notification system process, I'd be happy to answer those as well as anything else that you might have for me. But as far as streetlights go, I'm going to get to the credits kind of on the third portion, but I'm going to start kind of with the overview of where we were last time I was here at the end of last year, and just reiterate that when Hurricane Ida came, obviously everyone knows, the most devastating storm to hit this area, thousands and thousands of poles, 30,000 poles for us were damaged, that's across the state, you can boil that down to the parish, it was over 100,000, probably, you know, 30,000 to 40,000 of those being here in Kenner. Number one is safety, number two is to get the power restored as quick as possible. Unfortunately, the safety and the quickness to get the power back on does not account for the fact that we could couple getting the streetlights repaired and replaced if needed. If we did fold that into the restoration process, we would be many more, instead of seven to 10 days of a restoration, it would be, you know, months of a restoration process. And that would be for manpower, for equipment, materials, all the other necessities that are involved with streetlights. So then after that is done, we've done this and we've completed it, and we've worked with you and your offices, and thank you for your cooperation on that, getting the poles identified that were cut, dropped down on the ground, that residences, businesses, along with transformers, wires, all of that debris cleaned up and moved out the way, and transformers appropriately being environmentally disposed of. So that has been done. So we have transitioned to the streetlights, we're in that gear now, full focus is on streetlights at this point in time. However, we have run into challenges. Everyone across the globe has been running into the same challenges, and they're really twofold. You have manpower and resources coupled with global supply chain, you know, limitations on certain pieces of materials like arms, even light bulbs. We've gotten through that portion of the restraints as far as the materials go, we have our inventory fully stocked, ready to rock and roll and get all the lights fixed. As far as resources and manpower goes, we issued a request for proposals from third-party contractors in the last week, week and a half, maybe two weeks now, and we are going through those responses as we speak. So that'll mean more contractors, more resources dedicated solely to getting the lights either repaired, if they were broken, inoperable, and are still in place, or fully replaced if they were knocked down with a pole during the storm. So that will be happening, and the goal is, we're going to start that work with the resources ASAP next week or so, but we do have our dedicated resources that are working at a shorter, I guess, pace because we just are limited somewhat with the number of heads we have and boots on the ground. But the goal is to have everything cleaned up, the Ida-related streetlights, by the end of March. So that is, you know, right around the corner. We're five months beyond the landfall of Hurricane Ida, about to the date today, so we will get the rest of it cleaned up from a streetlight perspective, the goal is by the end of March. So in just a quick caveat, when you're looking at the streetlights out in and around Kenner and Jefferson Parish and the rest of the state, for that matter, typically speaking, if you see the wooden poles and there's a streetlight attached to it or it's missing from the wooden pole, that is normally an Entergy streetlight. Where we own it, we maintain it, we build the municipality for that light, and those are our responsibilities to repair. And then again, typically when you see a decorative light, a metal light that looks a lot better and neater than a wooden pole, that is most likely either on the municipality or a neighborhood association or something like that, and that responsibility is on them to fix it and repair it. We provide the voltage to the light, make sure that the power source is good, but then the actual fixture itself is on either the municipality or the homeowner association. So now we're getting to the meat and potatoes, if you will, the bill credits. We have done walk downs, we have done our, I've mentioned in the past that we have a lamp system, it's a software that accounts for what lights are out in the field, and we coupled that with our walk downs to see which ones were physically missing, not just needing to be repaired, but altogether missing, and we've come together with calculations to issue the bill credits. You should have received one, the city of Kenner, already. I'll be happy to sit down, bring the appropriate people to the table with whoever it is that y'all would like me to, to dive deep into the bills and look at what we did and how that calculation was determined. It's a large portion for, obviously, the whole month of September, and in the remaining months, as the repairs are made, the percentage of the credit gets smaller because the lights are coming back on. And I will caveat all this, I mean, the end of March is our goal, our target, to have all the damaged lights repaired. In reality, there's never going to be a moment in time where every single light, all the thousands and thousands of streetlights out there are all working at the same time. They're very well, maybe an instance, and it'll be a brief moment, but all the different materials, the timing, the, you know, age of what's out there, the different types, you know, cars hitting poles, lightning strikes, the storms we have such as today are all factored into that. So back many decades ago, when these formulas were created to bill a municipality for streetlights, it was factored in roughly 10- it was factored in roughly 10% of the lights. So that potential usage of about whatever it is, a 12-hour period during the night, that the burn rate could potentially be there. We bill you about 90% of that to account for that ongoing, you know, rotation of repairs that will, you know, will definitely need to be repaired. So that is accounted for, but that's separate from the credit. That's above and beyond that. I would also like to, you know, thank you guys and ladies for all the phone calls. I know that it seems like we have each other on speed dial. You haven't met my children, but they all know your name and so do my, my wife does too. So it's almost like a family we have here and I appreciate y'all working with your constituents, having them kind of bring the issues to my attention so that we can help Kenner and the greater community, you know, be a better and brighter place with the streetlights. So thank you all for that cooperation. And I'll open it to any questions.
Again, thank you, Patrick, for that and thanks for working on the credit formula. Because like I said, I understood the regular monthly bills, you know, were probably, like you said, some built-in credit, but wasn't quite sure how that was calculated. But then now with, after Ida, with all of the lights that are still not functioning, missing, definitely needed some credits for us for that. As you mentioned, you say you've got RFPs out to bring in more crews and you've got this plan by March to address all of these. I'm glad to hear that, but let's hope that that works. Because I get, you know, I call you, we send you emails practically every day on residents that are getting more and more frustrated, the darkness around their houses because of both streetlights in the front or in alleyways behind there that are not functioning and they don't quite understand that. So, you know, we try to be that in-between, but, you know, there's a time limit when we've got to say, you've got to get those lights back up. You know, so with that, let's give you to the March and let's hope that they get fixed. So.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Patrick, for coming again. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Segura for always bringing, I guess, the band together, Cox, AT&amp;T, and yourself to enlighten the council and the general public. So thank you, Councilman Segura, for always thinking about bringing you guys in periodically. And thanks for the response from me to you and to your family as well, because we do call you guys a lot. My only question is, sometimes, you know, we send, between myself and my assistants, send a text or an email. Most time, we receive responses back that you got it and that it's been addressed. So I guess just to be able to, because if I don't get anything or if it's a mixture, sometimes it get lost that until I ride or someone calls me, it kind of lingers a little bit. But if it's something that we can do to, you know, to bring that in, to be able to get the information back once it's repaired and once to ensure that you've gotten it, then please, we can talk about that, what we can do to make sure that happens.
Absolutely. Step one, I'll acknowledge receipt. Step two, you know, confirm the repair.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Councilman Brandigan?
Patrick, thank you. I know I send you a lot of texts too. My assistant sent 20 Entergy lights that were out on West Sponade and also on Vintage, where they got hit pretty hard from the storm. And I think about 16 of them have been repaired. And I think there are some other electrical issues. We'll get that information to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman McKenna?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Patrick, for being here. I know you're always responsive to us. And I really appreciate that. And I'm happy to hear that the streetlights are gonna be worked on and focused on because I think it's important for, especially for peace of mind for the citizens of Kenner because in terms of safety and also moving forward. But I guess I want to, and I appreciate that, but I also want to ask the administration because I think that a lot of the, Councilwoman McKenna and I rode around the city and a lot of the lights out, we, that are still and still remain out are on the metal poles. So I want some clarification on that, are, you know, especially along the corridors, like along, on Vintage, and Power and, you know, along those areas. So I have a question for you guys. Are those being worked on as well? Or, I mean, obviously, they're not working with Energy directly, but that's, to me, that's a really important thing because, again, safety is important, so.
Just gonna follow, just gonna follow into Chad Pittfield, obviously, he's not here. Unless, Kenny, do you have any report on that with the streetlights? I know it's putting you on the spot, but.
Yeah, I don't have any information. That's all that we're working on every day.
Okay, we'll get back to you on that part. Can you, Kenny, take the podium, please, just because you have some knowledge on it. Sorry, Councilwoman.
Those specific lights on Vintage, on those metal poles are Entergy lights, as well as the ones on Power.
Okay, so they, so those metal, the ones along there are actually Entergy-owned? So I'll just make sure I get that Patrick gets them.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they've been out for, I mean, they've been out for, some of them have been out for over a year, which obviously, if it's longer than the Hurricane Ida, it's not affected by Hurricane Ida. So we just want to get those taken care of, so, especially with the longer nights.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Segura?
Patrick, for giving us your updates on your progress to get our lights back working. And as you've heard, you know, we all have that concern. So I hope that y'all get some extra contractors in here and put them with truckloads of material and get them out there quickly to get these lights back functioning. Is there any, just to note where y'all probably operate, that's a separate project, the removal of all of these double poles that are not needed anymore. Is that's a whole different team?
That would be a different team than the team that we're getting in place, the third-party contractors for the lights. Yes, they're gonna be dedicated to the streetlights. So if you imagine the double poles you see out in the field, if you see the big tall pole and then the stub pole that's been cut down, that means we've transferred, we're on the new pole. And then protocol is to make our facility safe from electrical contact, we cut it down to right above the next level of communications, which could be Cox or whoever it might be on the pole. So it's pending transfer, yes.
Okay, yes, and I, you know, we've had those long discussions about that. So I understand that you work down, y'all cut off, then you wait for Cox, they'll cut and wait for AT&amp;T, and then somebody has to pull the pole out.
Correct.
I'm hearing at different times, though, there's still a question of, is it AT&amp;T or Energy? Because y'all have some agreements to say some own some poles and some own other poles?
That's correct. We've worked that out. It used to be, you know, rolling a truck, looking for a birthmark, a stamp or something like that that was on the pole. But we had a third-party auditing company come in a few years ago, or maybe a little bit more than that, that AT&amp;T and Entergy both paid for as a joint effort. And as part of that process, that inventory process, one of the things that they did was ownership. They identified pole ownership. So we have it all programmed into our systems that we can easily identify ownership. So that would be the last step. So when the last utility has transferred to the new pole, whoever owns it will come and physically pull that old pole out.
Okay. Well, obviously, we're still waiting for that in some cases. And just another eyesore that I see a lot is, in these double poles, they've got a rope around the two poles to hold them together. I don't know which pole is supporting what pole.
Yeah, it would be the new taller pole and the rope is there just for an abundance of caution. If you envision the pole and the ground level of where it goes in, the new pole or the old pole, on average, there's about over, a little over six feet that's underground. So sometimes that might not be absolutely necessary. But if something was to happen, it would theoretically keep that pole kind of in place where it wouldn't fall into the street or onto a vehicle or something like that.
No, and I understand that, but I'm just saying as an eyesore, residents, you know, they look at, call me and say, really? That's all you got? There's a rope pulling the pole up?
I understand, I understand.
Okay, all right. Well, I want to thank you for your report. And, yeah, it is the Finance Department Administration to work on the rest of the credit that we talked about. And we'll move on from there.
We'll be in touch. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
That's it, Council President.
Thank you.
That's it.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Brandigan?
Yes, oh, yeah, I have a question. We got an updated list of the Ida expenses. Do we talk about that now or? I just had a couple of questions on it. Okay, it looks like it went up 3.2 million since December 17th. And I guess my questions I have are, the trailers that are still out on the side of the building, are those being utilized now?
I'm not sure. That would be a Chad question. I don't believe they are. I think, I think they're off of rent right now. We're just waiting on the company to pick them up.
Okay, okay. Are we still paying for them, being there?
They're off of rent, so.
Off of, okay. And, okay. The other question that I had was in reference to the, the plan that we're following on the salary deal with the 2002 thing. Are we using the National, the NIMS program? I was told about that program where it's tied to FEMA or something for reimbursements?
We, we, yeah, Doug, Doug would be better to describe the NIMS program than I would.
Okay, but we are utilizing that?
Yes.
And have we gotten any FEMA reimbursements back as of today?
For Ida, we have not received anything yet. There's still work in the claims.
And I know you're working hard with FEMA.
Yes, I promise.
Okay, but, okay, so Doug's gonna talk about NIMS?
If you need NIMS.
How many, how many employees do we have trained in NIMS, other than Doug?
You probably have, I would say, well, all your police and fire are trained in it. And then we probably have, probably around, I want to say 75, 80, at least civilian employees who have some level of training in NIMS.
Okay.
So this, this council adopted a resolution several years back, adopting NIMS as a standard. And we have been utilizing those standards in the city of Kenner. The fire department probably since the 19, late 1980s. And the police department since the early 90s. And the rest of the city began training with NIMS after 2010. The NIMS standards actually came into being probably around, right after 9/11. And so the presidential orders at that time said that most municipalities should adopt a plan within five years. And we did that. And so we've been training our people since around 2000, civilian employees since around 2009, 2010.
Okay, and I understand that you're the guru on this. And Liz, so we're using that on the payroll issues and everything, or?
Yeah, so each person has like a job responsibility. And NIMS is the training we do that actually allows us to perform these duties. So a lot of people go through different levels of training depending on what their, what their job, you know, duties are during a disaster. So all of that is built in, that backs our claim, basically.
Okay. Why are we still using the 2002 process? That's not, that's not part of NIMS, is it? Am I correct or am I wrong on that?
So FEMA requires you to have a payroll policy, a disaster payroll policy. That's the policy we have.
Okay.
NIMS is the National Incident Management Standards. And within there are a number of different systems. It's for identi, it's, it's, it's a system that's designed to address handling incidents. And so a payroll policy is not part of that particular standard.
Okay, so it's not part of, it's not part that, so that's why we're using the 2002 system? That we've obviously had an issue with?
Yeah, she explained FEMA requires you to have a policy in place, but it's not part of NIMS. NIMS is, that would necessarily, would not necessarily be a part of NIMS required.
Okay.
Just a note, Ms. Vosch has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, pardon me.
If I could, the, when we went into the emergency for COVID, we triggered the NIMS org chart. So if you look, I think it's the 2021 budget, you'll see both a regular org chart and then the NIMS org chart. And I think that's probably the most instructive, Councilman, because that'll show you like the jobs that people were assigned in a NIMS organization versus the jobs they're assigned in a regular organization. So the NIMS is the management system and it says, okay, normally you do this job, but in an emergency, you do that job. And I think that's a place you could go if you wanted, just to see an example. We had both of those org charts were in that one budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had questions because I don't want to have a situation like we've had before, so, okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKenna?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I guess I want to jump back on to the, what Councilwoman Brandigan was asking about, the National Incident Management System. How many of our directors and our employees are, I know you answered, you said civilian employees, but how many of our directors are NIMS-trained? Like, are we, do we have a finance NIMS person? Do we have people that are trained in all the different areas?
So there are many, many different ICS courses. And so depending on what an individual's assignment is, then we will, we will assign them particular courses to take. And we rewrote our emergency operations plan last year. And so we went into detail on that, explaining which ones based on individual assignments. But most of our directors have some sort of NIMS training. Typically, it's the basic training and then there are a number of departments that have additional training. Some, some of the managers have the more advanced training. And so it really depends what their position is within the, within the, in the incident management team structure. And like I said, a number of our department, department heads have had or do have the training at this point. I couldn't give you a number right now. I just don't have it in front of me.
Okay, okay. And I, and I guess, I guess where I'm going with this is that there are specific procedures within the NIMS, within the, you know, the National Incident Management System that you have to follow in terms of payroll and reimbursement, correct?
NIMS does not address that, those are FEMA requirements.
Okay.
That forced account labor, forced account equipment, those are issues that are addressed through FEMA regulations.
Okay.
NIMS is about incident management. It's about how to address a particular incident, organizing your personnel and resources to address or attack an issue such as a storm.
Right, okay. So within those organizations, there are different areas of responsibility as you, as, you know, as we pointed out. And I think you sent an updated org chart last, I think yesterday, I believe, for this upcoming organization. But the different levels of responsibility that fall under there, like, I guess I'm, I'm trying to figure out like levels of approval. So, I mean, and this is coming, this is, I'm trying to glean some information to really understand what, you know, who makes the calls in terms of like payroll and hours and stuff like that? Because, you know, in a renewed, updated chart, and it's, it's, we just need, I want to understand and make sure that, that those protocols were followed under any, you know, org charts. And I guess I just want to understand that and, you know, that's, so.
Well, NIMS is a, is a complex system, and ICS is one of the systems in there. We utilize that to identify our incident management team. And we chart out the different personnel positions on that incident management team chart. And there is an incident command. And so all of our activities are reported up through the incident command.
Okay, okay. And so, I know you're, I know you're the, you know, you're kind of the incident command, the person who's kind of in charge of on the ground and making sure in an incident to, that every communication, you know, you're the emergency director, right? So in that instance, when you were, when you were responding and, you know, and this kind of goes back to the payroll question. kind of goes back to the payroll questions that, that we had, or that I, I think that the community has, do you, would you be the person that would make the call for payroll issues and payroll, you know, continuing to do overtime and stuff like that? Or is that outside? Because I know, you know, I think everyone, or probably most people have seen all of the reports, and you did not, you know, after September, you didn't, didn't have any overtime, you know, significant overtime. But there were other people who did, and we're, I'm just trying to figure out and really kind of dig in, and I, and maybe you guys, maybe you're not the person to answer, but just really want to understand where, where did that fall, and where that responsibility, and where that, you know, I, I think in a new, in a different org chart, it's, you know, your manager may be different, right? I mean, or the area of responsibility may be different, so just trying to understand that.
So, under, in incident management, we have a default team. That default team identifies people and their responsibilities. There's an administrative and finance component, there's a planning component, there's a logistics component, there's an operations component, and those components are broken down into branches and divisions and units and such and such. In this particular case, I was a planning, I was the planning lead. So any type of operations that you have, or any emergency operations that you have, it's a collaborative effort between all those different functions to come to a unified plan to address or attack a particular issue. Under our plan and under NIMS, the operations component is the one that has the responsibility for all of the tactical operations that, or, or missions that have to be carried out in order to address a particular issue. In this particular case, Mr. Pittfield was in charge of operations. So I was in charge of planning, and Ms. Harrington was in charge of finance and administration. And there's other branches, like I said, you have law enforcement and fire that come under operations as well. So all of those, this, you know, we have infrastructure branch where most of our activities, 99% of our activities were under the infrastructure branch, because that's where all of our issues were addressing. Whether, whether it be, you know, facilities that were damaged, or streets that need to be repaired and everything else. So all of those came under operations. So all of those different disciplines, finance administration, planning, operations, law enforcement, fire, they all come together to identify what their priorities are. And from their incident command or unified commands makes a decision as to how to address these things as far as personnel and resources that need to be deployed in order, in each area in order to address it.
Okay, I guess that answers my question indirectly, but not completely. But thank you for that, and I, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Doug.
Point of order, Mr. Duff, yeah, point of order, point of order here from the audience? Is this an agenda item that was taken out of order on the agenda? I didn't hear no vote. I didn't hear anybody put a motion on the floor, we want to take certain item, a certain item out of order. I didn't hear none of that.
I, I don't.
So we may have a procedural problem here, okay? Now, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Morella.
What's that?
Excuse me a moment.
Go ahead.
It was, it was questions related to finishing up the mayor's report. Ms. Sal, do you? So, we don't, in your opinion, we don't have a procedural problem?
Okay, I did, that's why I called point of order, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, it's good.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor this evening? Councilmember McKenney?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay. At the request of Councilwoman McKenney, she is requesting a resolution creating a committee of the whole council for the purpose of inquiry and investigation into the operations of the administration under the provisions of Section 2.30 of the Kenner Home Rule Charter related to the City of Kenner's response to and recovery from Hurricane Ida, including but not limited to disaster payments by the Zon administration to select employees in violation of a 2002 disaster pay policy. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilwoman Branigan, to amend the agenda to add item 13A as read by the clerk. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to object to the agenda being amended? Please come forward and state your name. Seeing none, is there any discussion?
We do have someone come.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't see him, I'm sorry.
It's all good, it's all good.
Great, Tab, 3720 West Loyola Drive. Why are we having to add this to the agenda tonight instead of going through the right procedure? I mean, I, I see we handed out a folder and it gets laid around, and then, Ms. Sal, did you get a copy of that?
No, I did not.
Items can be added from the floor, correct, Ms. Sal?
I'm sorry?
Items can be added from the floor, correct?
Say it again, I'm sorry, sir.
Items can be added from the floor.
With unanimous vote of the council, that is correct.
So why would we do that, though? What are we trying, what are we doing here? Trying to confuse the audience, or trying to confuse the citizens? Is that what we're doing? I mean, I haven't heard this one, I didn't see it, why wouldn't we go through the normal channels, the normal procedures? That's what I'm asking here.
Do you wish to answer?
Yes, yes. Mr. Teff, I'll answer that question. I think, you know, in terms of this, I think that there's been ongoing reporting from the, from, from, obviously, I quote in here, you know, Lee Zurich and Fox 8 News. And there's a lot of questions that we have, it's our fiscal responsibility as the council, our fiduciary responsibility, to, to really get to the end, the individual, or, you know, answer these questions and make sure that we, as the council, are protecting the tax dollars of, you know, and making sure that, you know, we are doing what's right and that city is following the policy. The reason that we are, though I'm presenting this right now, is because we can't wait, we can't wait, we shouldn't wait for two more weeks to do this. You know, as the council, we can decide whether we do this or not, but, I mean, I know that you've seen this, I know you, and I know that, you know, we have concerns, so digging into this sooner rather than later is, is a priority to me, and I think it should be a priority to every single member on this council, because I think the longer we wait, it, it makes like we, we're complicit in this. So if we don't act and we don't try to find out and dig into the details before, you know, before we, before maybe, you know, who knows what's gonna happen? But we want to make sure that the city is being in compliance with their own policies. We need to understand, we need to find, fact check, and I think that it's, that waiting two more weeks to do this, you know, I created this, and I did this in response to, you know, some of the reporting that's been done, and, and it took me a little while to get this taking, you know, pulled together, but I think it's important for us to discuss this, important to start the investigation and use our powers to, the legislative oversight policies that we do have sooner rather than later. So I think, hopefully that answers your question.
Well, it, it kind of does, except when you bring up the Zurich's reports, there is flaws in those reports that he's given out. He's leaving out some information.
Well, and that's why we need to do an investigation to give all of the information.
But that happened at the first one, which was about a month or two ago. And now we're coming into, I, I guess because of the third one, or whatever, whatever motivated this to happen. But there's been three different reports, and, and then all of a sudden say, well, now it's going to be a priority, when it's, why wasn't it a priority when the first report was put out, if we were that really concerned? And again, if you look into what Zurich is reporting, and you look into what is really, truly happening, you're gonna find out there's some little things that are missing that does kind of clarify what's going on. And to me, that's where we should, if we want to aim at something, we should do that. But to come up after three different reports and say, now we want to do an investigation, you know, it's almost, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, it really doesn't. If you want to do that, if we was that concerned about what Zurich was reporting, then we should have done that after the first report, because the first report also had little items that were not real clear, or was not really stated to be exact. There was little things left out that could change how things could look.
Well, Mr. Teff, I guess I'll chime in on this since you're asking. I, I suppose at this point, as Councilwoman McKenney said, we have a responsibility. And if there are errors, then by us doing this, by this being done, then hopefully we're gonna get everybody's side of the story and release a report and information that says nothing was done improper and whatever the, the answer would be at the end.
And I, I agree with that, except, the exception being, again, you're stating, like, right now, the world is falling down and we gotta act on it now, but the world didn't fall down a month ago, or two months ago, when the reports first came out. That's when the red flags went up. If you really want to look at the flags, that's when flags go up. But nobody did anything or brought up legislation at that time, you wouldn't be doing it at the last minute. You could have done it months ago, or weeks ago, or you could have done it the, the last council meeting ago. That's all I'm saying, it doesn't, there is certain things that, to me, there's, there could, if you, if you're gonna investigate something, when the flag comes up, then you investigate it. You start your investigation, but then you could take your steps. But to just arbitrarily, after two or three months, come up and say, well, now we're gonna slide this one in and make it special, it should have been special a long time ago. That's my point. And to bring it up now, to me, just isn't right, because it's like, you know, it's, it looks like it's just continuing, 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 based on a report by a reporter, then again, little things can make a big difference in how a narrative comes out. Certain words can make a big difference, how a narrative comes out.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm gonna ask you a question. So how do you know the information he, he's, he's reporting on was incorrect?
Because I have done some research on it, I have dug into it. And I want to tell you something, I let, I let Mr. Zurich know I was also doing it. I mean, I emailed him and I let him know, I'll go on record right now and let you know that. Why? Because I want it done.
Whether you've had lunch with him or not is irrelevant as far as.
Well, no, it is, because why?
How do you know his report was incorrect?
Because.
You've gotten all the records? You've gotten all the information? And budgets?
First of all, first of all, all you gotta do is take what he's, all you have to do is talk to your, talk to the financial officer, talk to, talk to the people that were actually doing it, what happened? What was going on? For example, you know, it was reported, wait a minute, it was reported, somebody worked 25 hours, and that is baloney.
Excuse me, can, can we have a point of order? Mr. Teff has talked for five minutes.
Yes, okay.
Please let other people talk.
That's all right, I let, I've let it be known, and, and it's now public record, I'll let it be known.
Thank you, sir.
Because I think that this is nothing, you're going about it the wrong way. I understand the intent, but that intent should have been done some time ago, not all of a sudden, boom, we're gonna do it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Teff. Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 Eastway, on the drive, 5th district, 50 years. I'm gonna direct this to you, Madam, Madam City Attorney. Did I, or did I not hear you just say, you received no communication on this item at all?
I said I have not seen it, and I didn't draft it, my office did not have anything to do with it.
Thank you for the confirmation. Councilwoman McKenney?
Yes.
If it was imperative, and y'all got the best interest of the citizens of Kenner at heart, okay, and I share those sentiments with our tax dollars, if it's so imperative to put this on the agenda tonight, how come the city attorney's office got no communication on it?
Well, so quite frankly, we haven't been working with the legal department, because we wanted to make sure that all of the, you know, part of them isn't, it's actually investigating the Zon administration. So we want to make sure that all of the information that we, that was shared in here is, is completely, you know, open. So none, no, I haven't spoken with anybody on this council about this, because I think it's so important that we do this, that it's, it's, I worked, so I worked with, you know, with, I worked with actually Tom, and we created this, he's an attorney. So we worked with this and we created it, and as a council, we don't have to work with the legal department. We have, that's what's one of the reasons why I wanted to hire our own legal person. So I think it's important that all of this, and it is written, it is written on, you know, based on the regulations that, the Home Room Charter, and also all of the regulations that we have a, a right to, to investigate this.
So let me put this in perspective, Councilwoman. You're proposing an investigation without any communication with the city attorney's office at all. This is what the problem is with our government downtown. There is no communication, there is no commitment, and there's no cooperation. It's all politics, it's all politically driven, and I could tell you something, it's gonna stop, you can count on it. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
Ms. Alessandro?
Thank you.
Hello, Stacy Alessandro, 3309 Chateau Boulevard. I have some comments and questions. I think this is absolutely the correct procedure for what Councilwoman McKenney would like to do tonight. It's the exact reason why we have this procedure available to us, is when something happens that's urgent, that we can pull things from the floor, otherwise we wouldn't even have this to do in the first place. So yeah, this is urgent, it's a matter of public transparency, we're having multiple news reports, so what if nobody asked, nobody said anything when the first reports are coming out? Now we're having two and three news investigations, and the people in the audience are questioning, why do we want to investigate this? This is complete insanity. Okay, maybe it's not as quickly as some people would have liked, but it's happening, and now they want to stop it. The very people who do nothing but ask question after question.
Excuse me, Ms. Alessandro, please stop commenting from the audience, please. Thank you.
The very people who keep asking question, question, question on their Facebook page now don't want you to give them the answers. The reason you're not working with them is because that, they're the reason we're under the investigation right now. You don't give, you're not supposed to give advance notice. You guys are just finding out about this, the public is, let's have a level playing field. Let's all find out about it at the same time, tonight. Let's put it on the floor in the light of day. Nobody has to work things out, that's why you don't give advance notice. You say, this is the issue, we're gonna talk about it now. Nobody gets to, to do backroom dealings and figure out how to cover themselves and cover their tracks. Let's put it on the floor now. I cannot imagine a single one of you guys up there not wanting to do this. And if you do, shame on you. Shame on you if you vote against this. I have never heard something that is more for the people and more for transparency than what I'm hearing tonight. It takes guts to do this, and kudos to you, Ms. McKenney, thank you for doing this. And I'm gonna tell the council, I hope y'all vote for this, I'm gonna thank you in advance. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alessandro. Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, thank you, Ms. Alessandro. Mr. Teff and Mr. Al, thank you both for your. Mr. Teff and Mr. Al, thank you both for your comments. But, you know, Mr. Al asked the city attorney, you know, did she know? She did not know. But it also reads, it is our right, it says resolutions, motions, and other items on the floor. If either one of us do not believe that they want to support it, then we should vote no. If we vote no, then it fails. And then it will be on the next agenda. So no one is trying to slide it in. There are certain things that are going to come up sometimes that maybe was not able to be communicated. I don't know everybody's schedule. But we are not doing anything wrong or illegal. That is the right as the council to do this. You may disagree, and I can appreciate that. But if you disagree with it as a councilperson, then you should vote against it until next time. That's all I'm saying. We're not doing anything wrong. Councilwoman McKinney didn't do anything wrong. This is part of the charter for us to do this. That's, it's simply that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir. If you'd state your name and which street you live on, please.
Darrell Price, 539 Salvador Road, Kenner. I would like to commend the council on your efforts to stand up for what's just right. Because if the administration did know wrong, it shouldn't be no problem. And this is what we got to do better at as people, especially in government. We got to correct what's wrong. It don't matter who it is. If it's wrong, it's wrong. And the taxpayers are the people who have to swallow a lot of the crooked business and politics. So do what's right. Follow the signs, follow the money, and you'll get your answers. But if this brother who has been reporting news for a long time starts to dig into something, maybe there's something there. So do your job. Follow the signs and you'll get your answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKinney?
Yes, I just want to clarify. So this resolution was written, not, not, I consulted with Tom Councilman Wilmot, but I did not, he did not help me in assisting me writing it. So I just wanted to clarify that, but.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Brannigan?
Look, it's obvious that this 2002 pay plan deal has caused an issue. This administration did not write that pay plan or do that pay plan. Somebody in 2002 did when most of us up here weren't even thinking about politics, okay? So we need to get to the bottom of it. And I think that this is the way to get to the bottom of it and figure out what the deal happened. And, you know, it's a situation where we need to make sure that everything is done right in the city of Kenner. And the administration had nothing to do with this policy, so.
Good point. Councilman Segura?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, thank you, Councilwoman McKinney. I asked this last meeting that we put a committee of the whole together. I asked the chairman to do that and/or have a special council meeting for us to gather information. So whereas this document does do that, it is, okay, I like it. It'll work. It's not the best way to do it, a more friendlier way, but you want to call it an investigation, that's fine. I was content with just holding a meeting of the council of the whole at a special council meeting and bring in the information that everybody has the question on, whether it be fellow council members, the public of the administration, to put together a database or a collection of facts to then write a policy to correct or change these 2002 policy that we keep referring to. So the only thing I'm going to ask is, does this mean that the agenda item, which is the one that got scheduled for tonight? Will that be deferred at some point? Because if this is going to override it? That's all I'm asking, is just some clarity. Because we don't all get the same information that everybody gets. We get handed stuff.
I think the one you're referring to, Councilman Segura, is on for first reading.
Yes, okay.
There's, there's, just a correction this too. And I was going to ask the same question. Look, we, anytime the council can educate themselves before passing a law, the administration wholly, fully supports that to the whole council. But my question was going to be the same as yours. Are you going to pass a law in two weeks or do the investigation? I guess that's, we're trying to figure out the time period.
Okay, well, I understand. And that's just kind of what I'm asking. This, this vehicle is fine. I mean, it's asking for us to gather facts a little bit more inflammatory, so to speak, by calling it investigations. It should be fact finding. It should be for our responsibility to ask questions, gather facts, and then decide on a policy that needs to be put in place for the administration to follow. So again, I thank Councilwoman McKinney. I wish the, that, you know, when I asked for this committee of a whole last week, we could have started work back then. But if this is how they want to do it, I don't have a problem. We'll let them, and the we, she says, we talked about it. And then she says, no, we didn't talk about it. And I had Councilman Wilmot's help, but then he whispers in her ear, no, I didn't get his help. Okay, we'll work with it. We'll come together. Is there going to be, it's not in here, so a council meeting, a committee of the whole. Council President, you have that responsibility to form a council committee. This is just putting it in a more formal fashion. Are you going to assign the chairperson and then start signing the dates in times that this committee will meet to start gathering?
Yes, I will meet with the council clerk and we will discuss that and notify everyone accordingly.
Good, thank you. So let's move on.
Madam Clerk?
Any further discussion?
Can I ask a question? So we're just, we're just trying to figure out the administration. Like I said, if the council can educate themselves before passing a law, that's great. Councilwoman McKinney, what is the timeline here? Because I'm trying to figure, you got in two weeks, you have two pieces of legislation coming up on the same issue. One has amendments, I believe. The other one does not, or has things added to it. The other one's kind of blank. So how are you working with Councilwoman Wilmot? Because we need to know, are you doing the investigation, still going to pass a law in two weeks?
What we'll do is, we'll meet with the council clerk and with Ms. Sala and work out the logistics and notify you early next week.
As long as we get notified, because that's sometimes the lack here of us getting notified.
We'll, we'll get it done before the middle of next week and make everyone aware. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the consent agenda, we have approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of January 21st, 2022. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item two A is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown on February 26th, 2022 at 3800 Loyola Drive, being property owned by the city of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item two B is a resolution granting an alcoholic beverage permit to Friends of Rivertown on February 28th, 2022 at 415 Williams Boulevard, being property owned by the city of Kenner in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item three A is application number 2257-22, Kenner Central Lions Club to hold a public gathering on the third Friday of each month, starting in March and ending in October, from 5:30 to 9:30 for the purpose of a cruise night at Lake Town in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three B is application number 2258-22, Washington Elementary, to hold a public gathering on February 24th, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for the purpose of Mardi Gras parade in the neighborhood near Washington Elementary in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three C is application number 2259-22, city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on February 28th, 2022, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the purpose of Lundey Grill Festival 2022 in Rivertown on 4th Street in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three D is application number 2260-22, city of Kenner to hold a public gathering on February 19th, 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for the purpose of Crew to Kenner Parade at 2001 31st, 34th Street in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three E is application number 2255-22, the crew of ISIS to hold a public gathering on February 26th, 2022, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the purpose of a pre-parade party at the Punch Train Center parking lot at 4545 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item three F is application number 2256-22, the city of Kenner District 1 to hold a public gathering on February 19th and 20th of 2022, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the purpose of Black Heritage Festival at 400 Williams Boulevard in the parking lot. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the consent agenda. I have a motion by Ms. Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot, on the consent agenda. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Motion passes seven zero. Under the public appearance agenda, we have item eight, public hearings for final passage. Item eight A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 12,877, an ordinance amending the 2021, 2022 operating in capital budgets to fund two part-time recreation department employees to assist at Marsperino Playground and amending ordinance number 7549. Mr. Chairman, I have a request for a two-meeting deferral. I have a motion by Councilmember Brannigan, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to defer for two meetings. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Brannigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to defer. Item nine is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and/or alienation of immovable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids, we have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage, we have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 12,941, an ordinance adopting a sexual harassment policy for the city of Kenner's city council. Mr. Chairman, I've also received a request for two-meeting deferral on this item. I have a motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Brannigan, for a two-meeting deferral. Any discussion?
Yes. I authored this. Why a deferral? McKinney?
Yes.
Councilman?
I'm sorry, sir, but she was looking this way. I thought she was.
I'm just thinking you could refer to.
Councilwoman McKinney, can you explain why you need a deferral on a sexual harassment policy to prevent our employees from being sexually harassed at this time?
Yes, and I disagree with some of the mechanisms.
Did you contact me to ask anything about it?
No, but I, but I was not able to contact you and discuss it with you. And I would actually need to reach out with. I need to reach out to Joyce because I think that we need to have more discussion on this. I think, obviously, as a woman, this is very important for us to make sure that we have a working sexual harassment policy. But I also think that it's also important for us to have more, you know, for it to cover all, not just the council. We need to have all elected officials. So I think that that's something that we need to discuss. And we haven't had the opportunity to do that, so I.
Well, that's not exactly true. This is final passage. It's been up for a first reading. And you had two weeks in between there to reach out to either me or the city attorney, which I did choose to consult and put this together. Not legislation, not using the city attorney. I used the city attorney. So if you had a concern, why didn't you reach out to her two weeks ago when it was on for first reading since then? Or reach out to me to ask questions?
Because quite honestly, there's been other things that have been going on. And this was a policy that I read through, but I hadn't had an opportunity to reach out to, to reach out to you or to the city attorney, so.
Councilwoman McKinney also had some issues with her family, Councilman.
And I had, and I also had personal issues.
I just, I understand. We all have issues. That's our job. Let's do the job in a timely fashion. Y'all put this legislation together and wanted to run it in through the, from the floor? You didn't have time to, you had time to do this legislation. So, Council President, I'm just taking point of order here that everybody has family issues, personal issues. But if this can get through, why can't this go through? There's a reason. But this was put together under the premise that several meetings ago, the city, this Foché brought to the attention of this council and the public that we did not have a sexual harassment policy that this council had to work under. There's a city policy. There's been sexual harassment complaints made by council, against a council member. So it was necessary to get this moving. This is a clear example of what you just said. This legislation needed to be put up from the floor and voted on. And this is in the past. This is currently pending where we have a council member who's been, allegation placed on them for sexual harassment, and we did not have a policy in place to adhere to. So I immediately went to work on this, worked with the city attorney, an outside attorney that the city attorney has available to deal with sexual harassment, and put this together and put it here two weeks ago on first reading for everybody to take a look at. And the fact that you're now going to go and say, oh, I got this problem. I like, I don't like this, that's just not proper. You had the time, you had the opportunity. You're just trying to stonewall this for some reason. And I take that offense for all of the employees in our city who do not need to be subjected to sexual harassment in the workforce by anybody, especially a council member. And that is now available. Do we have a record of this complaint that I can refer to now, or what?
We have a copy we can pass out to you.
I'd like to, because we seem to not be able to talk about it. I want to talk about it.
Is this proper?
Yes.
Is this, I'm not asking you.
It's discussion on why this should not be deferred.
Ms. Sala? Ms. Sala?
Yes.
Is this proper? To disclose this information at a council meeting?
I say because there is a pending situation.
Natalie, please don't hand anything out yet until we have a response, please.
Because it's pending. And I don't know if the information is redacted. I don't know if anyone's name is in it. But as an attorney, as an officer of the record, but also as your attorney, I don't think we should do this in public.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, so we can't see this report in public. But why is this not being approved, not go forward to put in place this policy so that it can be addressed immediately when complaints come in and be handled properly? If you had a problem with the language, you've had weeks to look at it and bring your suggestions up. Deferring it right now is telling the workforce of this city of Kenner, you do not care if they are sexually harassed by anybody, especially a council member. This legislation was designed to address that specifically, that no council member, no elected official can sexually harass a city employee and not be held accountable.
Councilman Segura, I concur with you. And that's obviously why I've seconded this. For whatever reason, and I'm not speaking for Councilwoman McKinney, but I think we all agree as a council that there should be a policy in place. And it's, it should be something that's addressed. that's addressed. But if Councilwoman McKenney, and I'm assuming Councilman Brannigan, and whoever else want to add some things to it, and yes, I understand maybe the communication was broken down, but there is a right to do that. There is a right to defer it.
If they want to hide from what's in here, I don't have a problem. I can understand their reasoning for wanting to hide from it. It is here. It's been out here for two weeks, available to everybody to look at and read, and if they had a question legitimately, they should have put it in timely, and so it could be amended tonight and addressed. To deferring it is just out of line, and it just speaks highly of their contention that employees should be allowed to be harassed.
Can I add something about the policy, if you mind, Christie? Councilwoman McKenney?
Sure.
I heard the comment that to add, possibly, I think you said, other elected officials. I won't speak for the chief, but I would assume the Kenner Police Department has its own policy on this issue, so if they do, he would fall under that. We, the administration, has its own policy. I fall under that, I would fall under that policy. So the only other two elected officials in the city, besides the seven of you all, are myself and the chief. So we don't follow a policy dictated by the council, not policies. So I just want to throw that out to all seven of you all.
And the administration has a policy.
Right, and you can't write a policy for me to follow. You can write a policy for yourselves. Again, the chief can weigh in on it, but I would assume the K P D. has its own policy, which he would fall under as a full-time employee, such as, that's how we're classified. So leave myself and the chief out of it. I'll take that back. I'll let the chief speak for himself. Leave me out of it.
Chief?
We currently, we have a longstanding policy on sexual harassment, so that we follow. So, and it's state law that requires you to have it, and we have the internal policies.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Hayes?
Well, it seems like everybody has a policy but us, so... If y'all would just hold the comments. I've been in operations in two of our major banks in this state. I believe that we should have a policy. We've had two weeks to look at this. How can we just vote on something that just came to the floor with a seven-o vote and not look at what we're doing here? We're going to leave ourselves open for some type of legal action if we don't have a policy. I'm amazed we don't, the council, have a policy. Of all the people that work for this city, we should have a policy. So I can't see putting this off again. And if you don't want to second it, I'll second it, because again, it's...
I'll second it.
You do second it. I just, I just can't believe after what we did before that we're not going to do after we had a two-week notice on this. It's only the right thing to do.
That all?
That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Brannigan, did you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the council does need a sexual harassment policy in place, and it will be done in the next two meetings.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too, I agree with Councilwoman McKenney. We do need a sexual harassment policy, there's no question about it. It needs to be done, it needs to happen soon, but we got to get it right. I don't know that the verbiage in this is what we need. I know, I have talked to Joyce Sala, city attorney, interim city attorney, and asked for research from different areas so we can look at and adopt the best policy possible for the city of Kenner, and I say city of Kenner, for the council, and maybe, and maybe other elected officials. That's possible, too. But we need to know and have the right language in front of us. I know, I've read through this policy, there's certain things in it I'm not fond of. I would like to adopt and get it right, and this is the time we're working on it, and I think I would like to have more policies that I can look at. I've read numerous policies, some from different states. There's, believe it or not, there's not a lot out there, not for councils. Administrations have adopted them throughout the region, maybe the country, but you don't, for some reason, not by councils. I can't explain that. I don't know why. But we need to do something, we need to do something soon. I agree with all that. But is this the right policy for us? Are we just going to put this on us? One councilman, and I applaud him, he did his research apparently, and he did his homework, and he got a policy out there right away, pronto. But I think it was a little, it's a little premature. There's some things in it that I would like to look at closer, and yeah, I too have had personal family issues, and it's made it very difficult on me. No question about it. So I would like that opportunity, and I ask for the two-meeting deferral as well. Thank you.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too will be supporting this. I, like everyone else, am in supportive of a sexual harassment policy, but like most of us, the ability to look at it and to put it in place correctly is what we should do. It should not be just thrown together without really vetting it, because this involves accusations and things that people may say. We want to make sure we have an opportunity to do it, and it should involve all elected officials. That is my opinion. No one is running away from it. It is in two, it's a two-week defer, or two-meeting defer, or whatever it is, that will give us time to do it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Segura?
Okay, I thank you all for your comments. The flip-flopping is just amazing. We just went through a piece of rushed-in legislation that we were like, oh, we got to get this done right now. It has to be done. We've got to get this passed. Anybody, we were accused of being, we, out of line if we didn't vote for it, to get it on the agenda right now, because it had to be done. And all it is, is an inquiry into what took place during a hurricane and put some things together to perhaps join a policy later. Here I have a legislation that's addressing an immediate, immediate concern of sexual harassment violations by employees, by a elected official. The state of Louisiana had already passed legislation directing all government entities to have a sexual harassment policy in place after they, on the state level, had a problem with a high-ranking state official who conducted and had sexual harassment complaints filed against them. The state took that action to correct their problem and then also put it down forth for us to address. To come now and say, oh, wait a minute, I wanted to have more information on this, when you've had two weeks, it was done in a timely fashion, it wasn't rushed up on a last-minute, let me put this up, even though she took some time to work on it. This is a fairly impressive piece of legislation that she had, that, of course, she didn't have no legal advice, because her legal advisor just told her, don't count me in on using it. So we still don't know who gave her legal advice to this legislation. We know who mine came from, Ms. Sala, and what was the lady's name that consulted with us also?
Michelle Craig.
She specializes in what?
Trendescent law.
I'm sorry?
Who specializes in sexual harassment and sexual, and government ethics.
Exactly. So I took that with her and this other lady who specializes in this law, not someone who's just an attorney and says, oh, well, I got to have more time to read it. If you had the time, you should have read it. You did have the time to put this off, and it does, as Councilman Brannigan said, it will pass, because four of y'all are going to stick together for sure. So all I'm going to now tell the workforce in our city, I'm sorry. I am truly sorry that you may have to be subjected to sexual harassment by an elected official and not have it addressed properly, because four people here have already made a determination, they don't want to pass this right now. Sorry, folks, I've tried my best, but that's what happens when you have a shadow of government. They can talk amongst themselves and all of a sudden say, oh, we didn't talk to each other, but yet these other things pop up without city attorney's input, but yet they got all their legal input on it, and we don't even know where that legal input came from. So this is what happens when you have a shadow of government, a pack of people just wanting to do their business and not do what the city business should be, like this is. Sorry, folks, I tried.
Councilwoman McKenney. Mr. Morella, could you please refrain? It's all good?
Thank you, Council President. With all due respect, I think that it's really important for, I don't believe that us adopting this policy in two weeks or in two meetings is going to cause any incidences of sexual harassment to not be dealt with in the next, in the next month. If any one of us creates an incident at that hostile work environment or anything that has to do with sexual harassment, we will be held responsible regardless of this policy is in place today or in two or three, or two, you know, two meetings. So let's not pretend that we're not, you know, we're not concerned about our employees and our sexual harassment. We also need to make sure that we're comfortable with this policy and that we feel that we are all on the same page. If one of us does not agree, Councilman Segura, you voted for this. So, you know, I don't understand what your problem is. If we, there are instances where if we don't feel comfortable, I could, I'll gladly vote against it, but I think that it's very important that we have a sexual harassment policy. I don't think that the timing of it, which is what we're discussing at this point, is delaying it for two meetings so we can make sure that all of our, we are all comfortable with it, because this is a policy that we are going to be held accountable to. And if, you know, the only, the people that are most affected by it are, obviously, if we sexual harass anyone, which I would hope that us sitting up here, we have no intention of doing that, but, you know, and I'm not aware of any sexual harassment issues that have been going on, and nor do I want to be aware of any sexual harassment issues that complaints, but this policy is making, ensuring that we, as the council, has a mechanism to respond to that and also have due justice. We're not being, because this, these type of things can also be politically motivated. I know that, obviously, you're very familiar with politics and accusations, so let's not pretend that we don't want to ensure that there's not a political element to these sexual harassment complaints. So I really think that it's really important that we get this right the first time and not have to update it in the future. So that's why I think we need to have a two-meeting deferral.
Thank you. Mr. Taft? You'll have three minutes, Mr. Taft.
Thank you. My name is Greg Taft, live at thirty-seven twenty West Loyola Drive. As Councilman Hayes pointed out, in the workplace, and I believe in federal government, and I believe in everywhere else, sexual harassment is a big deal, and it is governed. So let me just say this, and it won't take three minutes. Whoever that employee is, I encourage you to sue this council, because that is not right. You have the right to have a good, safe, working environment, period. Thank you.
Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifty, it's for fifty years. I want to direct this to Councilwoman McKenney. This is the piece of legislation that should have took priority here tonight, and I'm going to tell you why. First of all, it's good legislation, because we've had council members come through here over the years with some terrible behavior here, and because there was no policy in place, they were never held accountable. The only one that ever held them accountable by demanding their resignation was myself. So I think you all got your priorities mixed up. This is the legislation that should have run on here tonight and been voted on, not thirteen-eight, it just came, that just came in from the floor and was added at the last minute. Get your priorities straight, council, please, particularly you ones that went back in on the acclamation. Thank you. Anybody got any comments, any questions? And Councilman Brennan, I apologize for the little disruption in the aisle earlier. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foshee? Ms. Foshee?
I'm trying, I'm sorry, sir. Give me a minute, please. The people most affected by this, Councilwoman McKenney, are not the council members. The people most affected by this are the employees. And when we won't call politics, politics, but we call sexual harassment, politics, we have lost our way. In August of this year, an employee made a complaint. This is February, six months later. I respect the fact that we want to spend time getting a good policy. Councilman Wilmot, I am so sorry about your father, he was a fine man, and you were a fine son. The fact that this was brought to you, and you chose to say, not my job, because there was no policy, means I believe someone here needs to push for the policy. There was no policy, and therefore, as the chairman, you felt you could not take action. I support that. But please, now we sit here six months later, please, somebody take this seriously. Please.
May I?
Councilman Wilmot?
I do take these matters seriously, but politics, ma'am, does apparently come into play, which I definitely think is wrong. There's no way that that should have fell upon me, and y'all pushed it improperly, and that's all I'm saying, you're wrong. Hundred percent, should have never did it. I had no authority in the matter, period. I even have a legal memorandum on the subject saying that it didn't affect me and I shouldn't have been involved, and that the facts weren't involving me. It's just because I was council president at the time, period.
Good enough.
Thank you.
Can I weigh in?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That was directed directly by D C E O, I mean, my C A O. It's uncomfortable for the administration when something like this happens. So Councilman Wilmot, you all have no boss. We had to bring it to a supervisor, and you chose to say you were not that supervisor, and technically, you may not be the supervisor, but who is in charge of the council? So then we did have discussion with Councilman Brennan, and Councilman Brennan, in discussions, Councilman, you said that if it doesn't get done, in so many words, we would work together with you, and obviously, you have worked with Councilman Segura, so we appreciate it. But to sit there and kind of insinuate it wasn't your job, well, then, we don't know whose, whose job it belongs to, so don't tell my C A O. that, or insinuate that it's wrong for her to do what she did. We have employees that we work with that work for us. They don't work for the council. So my job and her job is to bring it to someone in charge of the council, and unfortunately for you, you were the councilman for six months that did nothing about it. So don't look at her and tell her, or insinuate to her, that it's not your job, or tell her it's not your job, when we had to go beyond giving you the formal notice, and you refused to take the formal notice in these chambers. So then we had to serve you to take the paperwork. So don't sit here and tell her that, because it really does piss me off. So let's stop that right now.
And it does piss me off, too, Mayor. You were wrong, and she was wrong for the way y'all handled that entire matter.
Sexual harassment is wrong. Yes, it is wrong. You're right.
It is wrong, that we don't, we didn't have a policy on it, and it wasn't applied right, and y'all tried to push it on me as a political matter, and that is wrong in and of itself. Y'all should never handle your business that way.
Sexual harassment is a political matter?
It's wrong.
I'm sorry. It is wrong. You're right. It is wrong. Sexual harassment is wrong, and you were wrong for not to handle it.
And you were wrong, Mayor, for trying to push it on somebody who didn't have any authority.
Excuse me. Did you have a comment, Councilwoman?
No, I was going to say, call for a point of order. I'm sorry.
Councilman Carroll, are you trying to weigh in?
No, not yet.
You were so close to the microphone, I didn't know if you were going to sing or comment. Councilman Segura?
I'm just going to, I'm sorry, Ms. Alexandra, I think, wanted to speak.
I'm sorry. Are you coming up to talk, or just?
Councilman Segura, if you wanted to go first, I don't mind at all.
Go ahead. You've been up here longer than...
Okay. I just think this is a very important topic. We can all agree on that. I don't think there's anybody in this room that disagrees...
Excuse me one second. Folks, please?
Thank you. I don't think there's anybody in this room that disagrees that this is not an important topic. It's very important. I don't think the legislation that, you know, I came here and spoke on before, I felt was an emergency. I feel this is extremely important, but I do not feel it's an emergency. This, we do have, from what I understand, we do have a citywide harassment policy that covers everybody, all the city workers, except for the council. The police chief said the police department has one that he has to abide by. So I'm assuming that, from what I'm hearing here, right in... So I'm assuming that, from what I'm hearing here, right now, the only people that don't have a formal policy is the seven of you and then the mayor.
That, that is incorrect. I did say I follow under the policy of the administration.
So you do have a policy, right. So the only, thank you.
Yes, yes. Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to correct.
So the only people that don't have a policy are you guys. Okay, so, right now, y'all are on notice. All eyes are on you, that this is a hot topic. And I really don't think that any one of you guys are going to go out and do anything in the next two weeks. We've had, and Councilman Segur, I do get your point, that, you know, people have had two weeks to look at this. I get that point. I follow politics, and I'm going to tell you right now, I didn't look at it, and I wish I had. I really, I just had other things going, and I didn't get a chance to look at it, and that's on me. But my father didn't just pass away, and my father didn't just pass away as well. So that is a big deal. That isn't just, you know, not having time. It's a life-changing deal. And I think we can have a little compassion. They're not saying they're voting against your legislation. Mr. Wilmot said he's asked some questions, and he hasn't gotten any answers yet. It's very common, he's, he's just waiting on them, not that they're not giving it to him, but it's very common for you guys to give each other a courtesy when somebody asks for a deferral. They're not saying that they want to defer it forever. It's two weeks, and they want to improve on the policy, is what I'm hearing. The other thing I'd like to say is, I do know a tiny bit about this incident, and if it's, if it's even the thing I'm thinking of, because there's been a rumor for a long time. So I don't, unless it's something else, I don't want the general public to think that there's this huge deal going on. From what I heard, and I'm going to tell you, I've heard a rumor about something, somebody saw something.
Ms. Alexandra, let's not.
No, I just, I, what I, what I want to say is, I don't even know who it was, and I thought it was ridiculous, but.
I could not have a report brought to our attention.
Well, and I'm saying it's true.
That would give us the details, and you're trying to allege that whatever facts you have are not that important.
No, I don't.
Be that big of a problem.
No, 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 no. I'm just saying.
And I'm trying to say.
It's important to somebody.
We could have had the facts in front of us.
Well, because we're not going to go there tonight, because, but you, you know, there's a time to bring that up, if we're going to discuss it in two weeks.
Let's allege that they were not that big of facts.
Let's not.
I'm just saying that it's.
Ms. Alexandra, please.
Can we please just really look at this, and let's craft it to make sure that everything is covered?
Okay. Ms. Alexandra, your three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Miller, 2121 Indiana Avenue. Sitting back there, I just have one question. Is this a policy that's never been in place by a council, or just this council?
It's never been a policy in place.
So we've never had a council policy?
Correct.
And the reason I even come up and ask that is, I sat back there, along with other citizens, and I listened to the finger pointing. But obviously, if it's never been a policy, well, we can't blame any one of you.
Right.
It should have been done before you even took office. I mean, sexual harassment just didn't start three weeks ago. It's a long time, and it should have been addressed well before y'all were here. So whatever time you need, listen, I'm sure the employee wishes it was done yesterday, but whatever time I think y'all need as a council to get the verbiage correct, to protect not only yourselves, but our employees, then take what time you need. But, but the finger pointing is moot, because it was never in place.
That's right. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
No.
May I?
Yeah. You're going to close, so.
Go ahead.
You would recognize what we yielded to the public who had been waiting.
Go ahead, Councilman Segur.
Mr. Wilmot wants to step in.
Go ahead. Thank you. Sir, I hear y'all, Stacy particularly. This is important, and this is not, not an emergency. If this other legislation was such an emergency that it was just handed to us, I never saw it before, so how could I come and start saying, "Well, wait, I even had a chance to read this, and now you want me to vote to put it on the agenda?" Because if I don't vote, which I got criticized two weeks ago on a piece of legislation that was handed to me the same way, and it was shodly written, whereas this one does look a little bit more professional, which we still haven't determined which lawyer wrote it.
Councilman, you've said that.
I'm trying to get to that.
You've said it.
I heard that, but I'm trying to get to the point is, that's why this is important to take the vote tonight on this policy that has been, that I'm putting in place, so that we have something. It may not be the exact perfect, but we never get to perfect. If we vetted it through my city attorney, we vetted it through an outside specialist attorney, then the words in here are fairly good words. I have no reason to doubt them. If somebody else wanted to doubt them, they had two weeks to bring it up. So all we're saying is, I'm saying is, like I said before, not on my back if something happens, because we don't have a policy in place to cover an event that may take place in the next month before we get to vote on this policy, just because somebody didn't take the time to read it.
I call the question.
I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to call the question. Councilmembers, please vote to call the question. Councilman McKenney?
Yea.
Wilmot?
No.
Carroll?
So what are we voting on?
You're voting to call the question to end debate. You want to end the debate?
End debate, yes.
Councilman Segur?
Yea.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes six one. Councilmember Wilmot is opposed. Back to your original motion for a two-meeting deferral. Councilman Brennan?
No.
Councilman McKenney?
Yes.
Councilman Wilmot?
Yea.
Councilman Carroll, two-meeting deferral.
Yea.
Councilman Segur?
Nay.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes four three. Councilmembers Brennan, Segur, and Hayes are opposed. Item thirteen, it's resolutions and motions by councilmembers. Item thirteen A, it's a resolution creating a committee of the whole council for the purpose of inquiry and investigation into operations of the administration under the provisions of Section 2.30 of the Kenner Home Rule Charter related to the City of Kenner's response to and recovery from Hurricane Ida, including but not limited to disaster payments by the Zon Administration to select employees in violation of a 2002 disaster pay plan. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Any discussion on item thirteen A?
Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 50th District, 50 years. I'd like to address a question to Liz or Elizabeth, however you want me to call you. This issue that we're talking about, has anything been submitted to FEMA as far as reimbursement of what was paid? On this issue, we discuss it.
No, we're still working that claim to submit to FEMA, so.
But it's in progress.
Yes, the city has a lot of damages, so we're obviously prioritizing submitting everything to FEMA. We have a deadline coming up to identify all our damages.
Okay. In closing, I'm opposed to this item. I oppose it, and the reason why? Because I believe the proper people, particularly our legal department, did not receive any communication on this issue. And not only that, it came from the floor just tonight. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Madam Clerk?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
I thought she was going to open, since it was her legislation, but if she's choosing not to.
Yes, I mean, I, yes, yes. Thank you, Council President. You know.
You can thank Councilman Segur.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Segar, I mean, Segur. I just, you know, the reason I put, wanted to put this on, as I mentioned previously, I think this is an important legislation to get out into the public and make sure that we are being proactive, and especially with FEMA deadlines coming up, making sure that we are, we understand the policy, we, and we're doing our due diligence as the council, as the legislative authority, as a judiciary, we have the judiciary responsibility, to make sure that all of these, and it doesn't matter that, you know, these aren't, FEMA is taxpayer dollars. It's federal taxpayer dollars. So it is our taxpayer dollars. We need to make sure that it's being protected, and we need to make sure that any, anything that is questionable is, we get the right answers. I, you know, I think that it's important to, you know, as Mr. Teft brought out, you know, they, they, we, this, there's some erroneous information that was being presented. We need to know that information. We need to feel confident in that, in our responsibility and all the information that we're receiving. We did receive some information today, on Monday, haven't been able to go through all of that either. So I think that doing a council, a committee of the whole will give us the opportunity to collect that information out in the public, to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. And, you know, I think, regardless of the timing of this, I think it's better late than never, because I think it's, it's an urgent, an urgent matter. I mean, we actually had the mayor on, on the news recently, talking about this. So it's definitely something that we want to talk about, and that we need to get answers. And regardless of if, you know, regardless of the full, what we glean, it's really important for us to have those answers. So I hope that I ask for my colleagues' support in, in full.
Thank you. Councilman Segur?
Thank you, Council President. Okay, as we just got finished discussing about how important it is for councilmembers to have the ability to have questions asked on legislation and get those answers before they make decisions. I'm looking at this, as I said, it was just popped here in front of us a few minutes ago to get it on the agenda, because it was so urgent. Now, I'm asking, as I'm reading through here, I have numerous questions. I want to know who the attorney was that helped prepare this, so I can ask that attorney my questions. Councilwoman McKenney?
I don't think that that's, I mean, I, I worked on this. I worked, you know, I have led.
You have a legal experience?
No, I don't have a legal experience.
Well, I asked for an attorney that helps you put this together.
There was no attorney that helped put this together.
No attorney helped you put this together?
No.
You drew this up all by yourself?
No, yes.
Oh, no, yes. Which is it? Yes or no?
Yes. I drew this up and consulted with friends that are attorneys. Yes.
Okay.
And I'm not going to share that information with you, but thank you.
What, okay, folks, here we go. I had an opportunity to ask a question on legislation that's being put up from the floor to vote on right now. Now, I don't get the two weeks or a month deferral to ask questions. I ask a question, and I'm told I can't get the answer. So you see how this process works right now? When I said we have a shadow of government of four or five that do what they want, and they don't include everybody, and this is how they expect me to operate? How can I vote on something I did vote to put it on the floor? Okay, here it is in front of me. Now I'm asking questions. I'm not telling you the answer.
Nicely done, Councilwoman.
Councilman Carroll?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilwoman, for putting this on. I think it's a shame that Councilman Segur is insinuating that Councilwoman McKenney is not smart enough to put this legislation together. Councilwoman, are you a college graduate?
Yes, I have a master's degree.
What is, what is your job that you do?
I, I work for Energy, and I'm a scheduler, but I also, I have a master's degree in public affairs.
Councilman Segur, are you a college graduate?
I'm not going to answer that, because I can have that right to do so.
That was my point. That was my point. It's not required that you, I have the floor, I have the floor, Councilwoman.
You asked me a question. I'm trying to, you're not answering it. I am answering it.
No, you're not. You said, you said no. I said, I just, my, my question was, to insinuate that she does, she's not smart enough to put this together.
That's your opinion.
Is.
Councilman.
Councilman, can you? Come on, wait. He's putting words in my mouth that I need to say.
Councilman Carroll has the floor.
Then I want to respond when he's finished.
It's insin, it is insulting to insinuate that Councilwoman McKenney is not smart enough, who is a college graduate, who does have a degree and a master's in degree, cannot put some words together to read, to talk to people, to put this together, has been on the council for three years. It's not required that you are an attorney to put this together. I have put some together. So please don't insinuate that it is, she is not capable of doing this, and I take offense to that for any of us that would put on a legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Segur?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Carroll, for your opinion. Like you've said many times, it's only your opinion on things, and I appreciate your opinion. I never insinuated anything. I just asked a question. Did she have legal help? And tell me who it was, so I could go to them to ask questions that I have on this legislation, and she refused to answer it. So I take it that means she didn't, she had somebody, she just didn't want to tell me that. You're trying to insinuate and put words that she did it all on her own? Okay, great, if she did it all on her own. I just asked who had helped her to do it. She didn't want to share that. So here we are again, trying to read through a piece of legislation that is decently written. If she wrote it herself, I'll give it a credit for it. But when we have questions and we can't get answers, how do you expect us to vote on it? Because most of the wheresses are just a reiteration of, I hate to read the whole thing, but it says, "Whereas questionable actions were taken by the Zon Administration. Whereas specifically several recent news stories aired. Whereas the Zon Administration's failure to timely respond. Whereas the cities of Kenner have a right to transparency." Okay, but none of that says what we're looking for. What are we looking for in this legislation? I can't ask the question, I guess, because I won't get an answer. I don't have, I did ask the council president early, and he did give me the assurance that he will appoint a chairperson and schedule the meetings that we will have as a whole, which are going to be public meetings. They're the same as an open public council meeting. And we will be able to seek information and get our questions answered. So is that correct, Council President?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, we have.
Thank you for giving me that answer to my question, whereas the other questions.
Councilman Segur, please.
What? I'm sorry.
Let's, let's leave the, just stick to the point here.
It is the point, but thank you. I'm finished.
Councilwoman McKenney?
I, yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Can I speak?
I'm sorry, Mr. Teft, I'm looking this way. Yes.
I'm a ghost, that's all.
No, sorry. I, I wasn't looking that way.
This, this is, I want to ask if I can, if I may, the administration, Elizabeth Harry, I know, I'm not supposed to say names, am I? Ms. Herron, I hate to say your name, but I have to. Have you been asked for specific information, and have you denied giving that specific information?
No, sir. The, a request was made at the last council meeting for some documents, and like Ms. McKenney said, I did provide those Monday to them. No other questions have been asked.
Okay. Ms. Foshee, have you been asked any specific questions regarding this issue and denied giving documents or information to anybody on the council?
No, sir.
Ms. Silas, as a city attorney, have you been asked for any specific information or any specific input, and have you denied giving that information?
No, sir.
Okay?
No, sir.
All right. And Mayor Zon, same question. Have you been asked for specific information, and have you denied giving that specific information?
No, sir.
Thank you all.
Councilman Branigan?
Mr. Teft, Mr. Teft, they will be asked for the information.
Look, you're, you're doing an investigation based on a report, but you know what? You haven't even taken the time to find out yourself what is really going on. See, that's where the problem comes to play. You haven't tried to get the information. You rely solely on a report. My point is very simple. If you really wanted that information, you had access to it. You had access to every bit of it, and you, and the council, and the halls, did not take the steps. You're, you're actually taking the knee-jerk approach of, because there is a report, now we're going to do all this, when you could all alone. there is a report, now we're going to do all this when you could all along, since you're the legislative body and since you want so much control to get that information and you don't even ask for it. How do you expect to get answers if you don't ask the question? That's my point. And that's what y'all are doing. So you're going, so now you're going to create this committee when the information is already there.
Mr. Teff, we will get to the bottom of this.
I, I, I'll be honest with you. I think you're going to get to the bottom of it the way you want it to be. You're not going to get to the bottom of it because you're not even looking at the reports. You're not even looking at how it all went down. No, you're not. You have not looked at it because they just told me you never asked. And I'll be honest with you, if, if Mr. Pittfield was here, I'd ask him the same question. Have y'all went to him and, and tried to get information? But you're relying on information from a, from an outside source without even going through where the records are kept. You haven't even bothered to do that. And that's what's concerning.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKinney?
Thank you, Council President. With all due respect, I think that's what we're doing right now. We're wrote, we're right, we're creating this committee so we can get the answers that we need so we can find out the information and, and answer to the public. And that's what our job is. So thank you, Mr. Teff. Appreciate your comments and we're doing what, what you want us to do. So, thanks.
Council President, Mr. Mayor?
Again, no issues with the investigation before you pass a law. But just so the public knows, I do agree that we are always open to any questions you all have. So investigation or not, we have received no questions before this. You ask us questions nu, on numerous other things, not lately, not since the political season started, but a few of you all still ask questions regularly. If all of you all ask questions, we always are willing to provide any documents to you and answer any questions. So again, pa, doing an investigation or asking questions, whatever you want to do, before you pass a law is great with this administration. But just so the public knows, we are always willing to provide answers because we used to get a lot of questions before. We just don't get questions lately from all seven. There's about three of you all that I get questions from.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Did you want to speak, Councilwoman Branigan? No. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Wilmot?
Point of clarification?
Yes, you're voting on item 13A, the resolution as added to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Would you like me to read it again?
The, the heading.
The heading? Sure. You're voting on a resolution creating a committee of the whole council for the purpose of inquiry and investigation into the operations of the administration under the provisions of section 2.30 of the Kenner Home Rule Charter related to the City of Kenner's response to and recovery from Hurricane Ida, including but not limited to disaster payments by the Zon administration to select employees in violation of the 2002 disaster pay policy. Councilwoman Wilmot?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Yay.
Yes, sir. Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 12,937, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with MSMM Engineering LLC regarding Phase II Lincoln Manor subdivision drainage improvements, state facility planning and control, FPNC, project number 50-MF1-21-01, and an amount not to exceed $190,000 for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 12,938, an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement for the Lincoln Manor Drainage Phase II with the State of Louisiana Facility Planning and Control, FPNC, project number 50-MF1-21-01, in the amount of $1,066,667 for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Segura?
I do have a question on this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
How much is city money? How much is state money in this?
Be sure to keep the motions in seconds. I'm going to go type.
Councilman, the, the, the state is putting up $800,000 on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreiner. Is that all? Councilman Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Yes. Councilman Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 12,939, an ordinance ratifying an emergency purchase from Casco Industries, Inc. for the purchase, purchase of MSA products in the amount of $514,714 for the Kenner Fire Department. I have a motion by Councilmember McKinney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 12,940, an ordinance authorizing the use of State of Louisiana contract number 4400021435 with Genuine Parts Company doing business as Napa Auto Parts for the purchase of automotive parts on an as-needed basis for the Department of Fleet Management. I have a motion by Councilmember Hayes, seconded by Councilmember Branigan. Any discussion? Seeing none, councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Branigan?
Yes.
Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yay.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 15E is a resolution approving amendment number two with Shred, Kirk and Doll and Associates, Incorporated, to provide geotechnical engineering services associated with the 24th Street and Delaware Avenue Sewer Lift Station upgrades project to increase the agreement amount by $7,500 to a not-to-exceed amount of $252,269.91 for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember McKinney.
Mr. Morella?
Uh, Councilman Segura has to say it up as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I- Got you. Mr. Morella, I know what you're going to ask, but let me call up Mr. Tom, get his explanation.
Okay, there's some more to it that I want to ask, too, Councilman Segura, but thank you for interjecting.
Let Mr. Schreiner come up and give the explanation of what this is for.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 50 years.
Mr. Tom, would you please explain what this increase is for?
This, this additional $7,500 is to conduct a geotechnical investigation at the site. There are new structures that are required that have to be pile-supported. So we want to go out there and take some soil borings and run laboratory analysis and develop pile capacities. That's, that's what this is for.
Thank you.
Uh, got a question for Tom Schreiner while he's up here. I'll address it on the record. I, I take it this is the same company? They're several years behind schedule? Over there by Delaware and 24th Street? I take it that's the same people? Mr. Schreiner?
This, this consultant has not been working for us for two years. No, this is, I don't, I don't recall any, anything being extended on this project.
I'm talking about the primary contractor, Tom. On West Estpanade, that's not, that's not the, the project.
No, that, that's a different project.
Okay. Thank you very much and I apologize for being mistaken. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers, please vote. Councilman Brennan?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Wilmot?
Yay.
Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven zero. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance rescinding ordinance number 8672 adopted on June 20, 2002, which approved an office and parking, parking lot on parcel D3-A2-A Highway Park Subdivision, WWL Track, Kenner-Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, and approving a planned unit development on parcel D3-A2-A Highway Park Subdivision, WWL Track, Kenner-Jefferson Parish, Louisiana, to allow construction of a parking lot, which property is owned by the Treasure Chest Casino, LLC. Item 16B is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from DPC Enterprises LP for a contract to supply sodium hypochlorite on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 21-6638 and an amount not to exceed $72,900 for the Department of Waste Water. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Central Catering, LLC to provide food service for the Kenner Police Department Jail Facility in accordance with sealed bid number 21-6637 for an amount not to exceed $150,000 annually. Item 16D is an ordinance creating a procedure for handling of additional time during declared emergencies by the mayor or the city council. Item 16E is an ordinance amending the Kenner Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 1 of the Kenner Code of Ordinances to add section 2.2-19 insurance proceeds. Item 16F is an ordinance requiring insurance proceeds for capital losses caused by Hurricane Ida to be used for the repair or replacement of the damaged property. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, to readdress, I was cut off earlier and was unable to speak regarding, um, the sexual harassment legislation. And, and during that time, um, well, anyway, they called the question, so I was next, I think, to, to speak. So here I am, I want to give it a, another bite at the apple. First off, I wanted to say that the employment records that they were getting ready to give out, I think that is in very, very poor taste. That should have never been even attempted to do. See, we're talking about employee records. Is that political in nature? Who knows? But it shouldn't be done, period. Um, they shouldn't even just disclose them in any way. That's just wrong. And this interim city attorney agreed. It, it, it's not the right time, it's not the place, it shouldn't be done. Um, there's no authority for, currently there's no authority for the council president to be involved in a sexual harassment complaint so that, that apparently were alleged. Um, it, there's, there's no procedure in place for it. Um, I, I actually spoke with one of the attorneys with the city and, and it was clear to me that it, the council president's not the person. One. And two, I, I spoke to an outside attorney, same thing. Council president doesn't have the authority. Um, so, yeah, there, there's a problem with that. And, and that's why we need the policy. There's no question we need a policy. Because it was recently discovered, all this happened recently. So, and I pointed it out. I'm one of them who actually came out and said, we do need a policy. I agree. And it becomes necessary to create legislation so we can have this process fixed. It didn't, it simply didn't exist before. And as, we had a citizen that come up here, I don't know if he was, is here now, but thank you for coming up and, and making your comment. And he did say just that. There's no policy. There's no policy in place, so it shouldn't fall on anyone. But there is a policy for employees of the city. And that falls under the mayor. So that being the case, the administration has the only policy in place that governs. Now, does, should he be that person? Should the administration be that person? Is it the mayor's job? That's all, that's the real question. It certainly isn't the council president. If something happened today, this gentleman doesn't have any authority, period. So that, that's, that's the situation it was in before. I think it's, it's wrong to, to, uh, put that burden on this gentleman because it's not his responsibility. He doesn't have the authority. The administration has the only authority. That's the only policy that's working in place at this time. If anybody's job, it's their job. Thank you.
Two- Councilmen- Two- Mr. Mayor?
Two corrections. The administration's not the only one with sexual harassment policy. As you heard from our chief of police, from his own words, the Kenner Police Department also has a policy which he falls under. I am not over the council. I cannot have a policy over the council, Councilman Wilmot. That's all that we've been trying to say since August. We do not have a po, we cannot direct the council to fall under me. You do not work for me. The people that work for me fall under that policy. The people that work for the chief fall under that policy. You heard myself and the chief say the same thing for our depart, for, for me, for the city, him for his department. So two corrections to what you said.
Councilman Segura had, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, yeah, and the other explanation that I wanted to add to Councilman Wilmot's explanation, which I do agree made sense. There was no authority with the city policy that addressed city employees on sexual harassment. So that when any situation unfortunately arose where there's an allegation against a council member, a process was attempted to be just processed. And then that's when these quirks came into play to say, whoa, wait a minute, I don't have this authority, I can't do that. Okay, we got that. When I sat down and started working on this legislation, that was clearly one of the topics that was looked at, discussed with our interim city attorney and a outside attorney who specializes in sexual harassment policies. And we had numerous , uh, long-term talks on exactly that same problem. And then we came up with language that resolved that and put it into the legislation. So that, that this legislation does not put the burden on a council president to do anything, except if a complaint comes to them, pass it on to the next person. That's all. That's all this legislation says. Don't know why that's a problem now, because all it says is if an allegation is brought to the attention of a council president, then they have to pass it on and the policy spread, explains who they go to and what then takes place. The other next key thing was, how do you handle an investigation? Again, the policy clearly lays out who does the investigation. It lays out how the investigation is assigned and then who does it. Again, that's what was, should have been in place. It now was going to put it in place so that it clearly said how an investigation would be handled on an allegation that was made against a council member. Then after the allegation was investigated and a, and a finding was made, then depending on the finding is, explained what step comes next. So again, all of the policy procedures were put in place in this legislation to make it as clean and clear as possible to address these types of allegations and, and have them treated properly. But everybody's got a problem. They didn't read it. They now got a problem. So if they'd have read it, they'd have understood that. They'd have asked a question. They could have got an answer to their question to explain what it involved. But since they want to do their two meeting deferrals so they have more time to look at it, we'll have to wait. So again, city workers, be careful.
Thank you, Councilman. Did, Councilwoman McKinney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to, um, I just have a couple of questions, but I wanted to first start off thanking, um, thanking the citizens of Kenner for allowing me to continue to serve for the next, serve the city for the next four years as council at large. I appreciate that and I think I'm going to, you know, continue to serve and hopefully I will make you proud. Um, on a different note, I was, I'm in the crew of ISIS, um, which is going to be, we approved, uh, the, some of the festivities surrounding it today, um, in the consent agenda. And I just had a question. I, I went to the meeting yesterday and, um, and I'm concerned about some, some of the charges or some of, I, I guess- and I'm concerned about some of the charges or some of, I guess, in the budget, there isn't any information that we pass about, you know, those costs, and I have a question about funding, and if you can't answer this now, you know, we can have another basis. But what is, how are the events being funded? And also, like, in terms of, obviously, it's of paramount importance for police protection and, you know, lights and all of those things that were there two years ago. I know that obviously, you know, we're having finance, or there's financial challenges due, you know, as a result of COVID as well. But I just want to get that answered so we can have some clarity on that. Because I want to, you know, again, for the same reason, you know, we want to make sure that we have good oversight and understanding of what the city dollars that are being used.
It's paid for by Visit Kenner, we don't have oversight.
Okay, so none of, all of the police is going to be, all of the extra police are going to be covered by Visit Kenner?
At this point, we have a budget from the chief, and Visit Kenner is working on the budget. If there's a shortfall, then we will come back and need to identify funding source from the city.
There is a meeting with my staff, Visit Kenner, and the Kenner Police Department tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
And it's not the first one. There's been quite a few meetings.
Okay.
And then the Kenner Police have been in those meetings, and then we had one not too long ago with the chief of police, and it was, both of us attended, and then I think there was one the early part of this week, a latter part of last week, that neither one of us attended, but our groups met.
Okay, and so that's moving along?
But let me just make sure. This council is supportive of an ISIS parade?
Absolutely.
Okay, because I don't need an investigation on how the ISIS parade happened after we have a parade. So, and you kind of insinuated, we don't want to have the same problem as we had with the pay. So I just want to make sure that when this administration agrees with the Kenner Police Department and agrees with Visit Kenner to put on a party for the city of Kenner, you're supportive, I'm sure, since you're a member, but also you're a council person. So we're not going to be facing an investigation of the ISIS parade. I think that would make sure that ISIS would go someplace else.
Well, I.
It would just be the other ISIS if there was an investigation.
They may become the other ISIS if you start running them off, so.
I just want to, I'm just being proactive, if you could share that information with me, I'd just like, you know.
Yeah, proactive's fine, I just don't want to be attacked for putting on a party for the people, and then we have an investigation on how we did it. It seems like everything's starting to become a little bit of an issue, Councilman McKinney, so I'm just making sure. On the record, and everybody heard, it won't be a problem in the future, as long as Visit Kenner is sharing some things with you.
Right, exactly, just information.
All good, absolutely. Asking questions ahead of time is great, we love that.
Councilman Branigan?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to thank the residents of District Four for the support over the last four years. I hope that the majority of them see what I do and how I do it. I'm hands-on, and I, I'm happy to be able to represent District Four for another four years. Good things coming.
Thank you, Councilman Branigan. Councilman Wilmot?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanted to thank the citizens of Kenner, citywide, for allowing me the opportunity to serve another four years. I take it very seriously. I try to help everybody, that's my job. Again, I'm citywide, Tom Wilmot. Thank you very much for your support during this last cycle, and I look forward to serving you again. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Item eighteen is new business. Item eighteen A, at the request of Councilmember Carroll, a presentation by Build Strong Academy. Councilmember Carroll has requested a one-meeting deferral. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, seconded by Councilmember Branigan for a one-meeting deferral. Councilmembers, please vote on a deferral. Councilman McKinney?
Yay.
Wilmot? Carroll?
Yay.
Segura?
Yay.
Hayes?
Yes.
Branigan?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to defer for one meeting. Item nineteen is unfinished business and a motion to reconsider or remove from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Mr. Greg Teft? If you would just state your name and the street you live on.
My name is Greg Teft, I live at thirty-seven twenty West Loyola Drive, and I will stay long enough so that the police can arrest me after I get done. This sexual harassment thing, am I correct that it came up in August? Is that right? Around August?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, here's the way I see it. If it came up in August, and yet, we didn't do anything about it, and it's just now coming around, and we're now into February, as I heard on TV the other day, I'm going to quote this individual, because I think this is applicable. If it walks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Because you had since August to pass the sexual harassment deal. Because, Mr. Wilmot, you was the president at the time, you had the power at that time to do something about it. You may not have been able to do something about that particular case, but you had a chance and an opportunity to do something and have something in place for the next president when they took over the council, and it didn't happen. And I also want to say, while it's brought up, Mr. McKinney and Wilmot, I know that y'all went in unopposed, but I have to say, this is one citizen that didn't have a choice. And I'll be on record for that, and I'm willing to go to jail for that, because I wasn't given a choice. No one ran against you, you ran unopposed. It might have been different. If someone, if someone would have had the money or the time to do it, it might have been different, maybe. I don't know. But anyway, I'm now ready to go to jail, my wife knows I'm not coming home, because I think what y'all are doing is just appalling. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing to that poor lady that got, that had the issue. I don't know if it matters if council law has it or not, but I do think the federal government does have authority, and I think that employee may want to look at that, because that employee deserves a good working environment, just like everyone else. And y'all have had since August to do something. Thank you.
Ms. Foshee?
Mr. Teft, I wanted to clarify one thing in case I left a misimpression. At the very first meeting, when Councilman Brennan became the council president, he took this up in a meeting prior, saying he would work on getting this together. So he did accept responsibility for at least trying to find a solution. So I don't want, I don't want there to be any appearance that Councilman Brennan failed to take action. I think he's done what he can to bring a policy forward, so I just. Yes, sir.
Mr. Teft, if you could step up, Mr. Teft, could you step up to the microphone, please?
I don't know what happens after that, but the way I look at things, if I'm, same way as it, if you're a mayor or you're a president of the council, when something comes up that affects this city, that affects our employees, to me, those two positions has the fiduciary responsibility to protect the city, the employees, and I don't think that happened, because it should have happened, in my opinion, why didn't we have something in September? That's my concern. Because I don't know what time period it was, it could have been the end of August, what have you. I'm just saying, yes, maybe there's not something in place, but I come from an environment where sexual harassment is taboo, period. I mean, you start that mess, you don't have a job anymore, period. Because that is serious, and that's why there's so many laws on the books that said, that really specifies what sexual harassment is. Because the work environment is supposed to be free of any harm to an employee. They should be able to work without fear, without reprisal because somebody is against them, because that's the same thing.
Thank you, Mr. Teft, you have three minutes. May I ask a question, though, please, before? I understand the August date. I don't know when were any of the other council members made aware of the incident and/or, and where, I'm just trying to go with that, is not everyone was privy to it, not everyone was aware of it.
That's, and that's entirely correct, Councilman. The only other, besides the person who is alleged to have been involved, the only other person was the council president, and that is why at the very first meeting we had with you as the council president, I brought that up as a matter that needed to be addressed, and you promptly said, "We will address it."
And I appreciate that. Again, I just didn't want you to think the entire council had not acted.
I didn't mean in August, it was every council. I'm just saying, from my perspective, the president of the council at that time knew it.
No, I understand, but again, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, no, no.
That the other council members.
I'm just saying that some, after that, because I don't know when y'all became privy to it. Because I'm, this is the first time I'm actually hearing about it.
Ms. Foshee just said that, so.
And so, I'm just looking at it that if it came up, if you had somebody in a position to make the change.
Understood.
That's all I'm saying, and it wasn't done.
Understood, thank you.
May I just answer, Mr. Teft?
Yes.
Mr. Teft, I don't want any comments, so I don't want you, I'm not asking you a question, I'm giving a statement, that I'm glad that you were entertained by, obviously, my comment about the duck, but obviously, you missed all the other information. So you chose to pick that as opposed to addressing or listening to everything else that I said. That's all I'm saying. No, sir, I.
Oh, no, you're intent.
Sir, I'm not, I'm not asking you a question, I gave a statement. Come back next week.
Ms. Morella?
Al Morella, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifth district, fifty years. I want to remind this council, and I want to remind everybody in this room, that we have three levels of government. We have three branches of government in this city. The legislative branch, the administrative branch, and the judiciary. These branches set the policy. The administration sets their policies, you guys set yours, and the judiciary sets theirs. Now, Councilman Wilmot, I'm going to address this to you. The mayor in your exchange had to reiterate four times to you that the administration does not set your policy. You do. Now, having been a member of the State House, representing the ninety-second district for eight years, you should know that. Now, since we're talking about policy, and we're talking about compensation, most of you wasn't here years ago. The then-council passed a policy that compensated those who do not take a city vehicle six hundred dollars a month. Now, I understand it's only six of y'all that took that six hundred dollars. I don't know how many still taking it. That's forty-three thousand dollars a year. Now, I don't know if this policy was revisited, I don't know if the policy was done away with. To my knowledge, it hasn't been. So I disagree with that policy. I opposed it at the podium, I oppose it now. So you want to talk about policy, you want to talk about compensation, let's talk about all of it, even though, like I said, most of you wasn't here when that policy was passed by this council. Now, with that said, since this being Black History Month, okay, on January thirty-first, eighteen sixty-three, a group of slaves had formed a Union Regiment in Beaufort, South Carolina. Also, on January the thirty-first, eighteen sixty-five, the United States House signed off on the Thirteenth Amendment, which took effect that December, abolishing slavery in the United States of America. And for all you baby boomers, I don't think we had many of y'all up there, I'm one. Sixty-three years ago today, the plane crash dubbed the day the music died. Okay? J. P. Richardson, better known as the Big Bopper, Richie Ballance, and Buddy Holly were killed in a plane crash just outside of Clear Lake, Iowa. Sixty-three years ago today, I was going to be a teenager that year. So I got any time left, Brian?
Madam Clerk?
I don't need it.
You're not saying, are you?
I give it back to you.
If you're not, as long as you're not.
No, remember that, I'm finished. Now, wait a minute, I got to close. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
I will make this comment.
Yes, sir.
My W-2 from the city was under thirty thousand dollars. And I think that the only people that get more than the district council people, and Ms. Harin, or Ms. Foshee, please weigh in, or the at-large members, if I'm getting seven hundred dollars a month for an automobile, then something's wrong, because you ought to see what I'm driving. So that's it.
Can I respond real quick? Okay.
Your three minutes are up.
Next meeting?
Your three minutes are up, Ms. Morella.
Next meeting, three more minutes, Councilman.
Come on back, we'll. Reverend Cockham is on the list next, Ms. Alizandro, and you're not on the list, so I'm sorry, you'll have to come back another day. No, I'm kidding you, just relax, okay? Pastor Cockham?
Well, Jacqueline Brown Cockham, twenty-six ten Decatur Street, apartment eight. Happy New Year. God bless all of you. I would just like to share with you that I pray that the council will be more transparent, more respectful, more professional, and compassionate toward each other for the benefit of our constituents. It is very important that we seek truth, no matter who or where the consequences fall, and we need to go deeper inside of ourselves to ask God for his guidance first. We all know that there is a spiritual deception, a spirit of deception, disrespect, and spiritual chaos over the entire land. So let's not allow it to control or manifest and manipulate those of us who consider ourselves righteous. We cannot allow this to happen to us. Too much is at stake. Our souls are souls of mankind. So I'm going to say to you, in one of the situations we talked about, you talked about as sexual harassment, get a sexual harassment policy in place, legalize it, implement it, because the nation is right now moving in that direction where it's just running rampant as a cancerous cell. We don't do something about it in the beginning, or if we don't challenge it, no matter who it's coming from, we're going to get a snowball effect, and it's just going to keep going on and on and on, because people are not dealing with the consequences of it. They're doing whatever they want, and we are allowing them to do it. So thank you very much for your time. I pray for a blessed year this year, and to all of you, again, Happy New Year.
You as well, thank you. Mr. David Weathersby?
Anybody has any questions?
Pastor, Mr. Morella's got a patent on that, you don't.
I knew, I knew, that's why I had to turn around right there. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor, administration. Happy Black History Month to you all. My name is David Weathersby, five nineteen Webster Street, Kenner, Louisiana, seven oh oh six two. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the residents in the city in District One, concerned about the development in the old Morgan property. You know, we see, we see a lot of activity going on at this particular piece of property, and we don't know exactly what's happening. Now, I've heard a lot tonight, more than I wanted to, but I did hear some things that reoccurring, like, for one, for instance, transparency or the lack of it. reoccurring, like, for one, for instance, transparency or the lack of it, honesty, I heard a lot today with the administration and with the council. But our concern is with the development that's happening at that property. We don't know, we're not included in the discussions or the plans. That may be another policy that needs to be put in place, because if you're developing that amount of property, any amount of property, you are required to have permits, it's a standard, it's a standard to get permits and develop a piece of property. So we're concerned, because there's already inadequate drainage back there, there's already, like I heard mentioned, that there was water in the gym back in Hanson City, that's Buddy Lawson. So, it's drainage problem. So, with the development of this property, we don't know how it's going to affect the flood, the floodwaters back there, once it, once it, once the rain builds up, we don't know if this is a natural reservoir that's been holding the water there, retention swell, we're not sure. But what we do know is that we're not included in the plans or any, any meetings in regards to these developments. So while we welcome the development, we want to make sure that runoffs will not negatively impact the citizens in that area, because you talk about flood insurance, a lot of issues with that coming up now, you're talking about negative impacts like, like I say, flooding, just a lot of negative impacts. So we don't, we want an impact study, we need an impact study on the impact to the neighborhood. You have houses that we own, and the value is a concern with the development such as this, you have traffic issues, so it's a lot of different issues that we, we request information numerous amount of times, but to no avail. The developer should, or either the city should require the developer to conduct some type of study. The drainage study will let us know if there's need of any type of infrastructure underground, storage below, or any, what the study would tell us is the condition of the underground, it tells us the soil. I heard Director Tom mention about an impact study on another piece of property, so, or another development. So why can't we be afforded the same type of study? Whether or not it increases the drains pipes back there, you know, we need to know the infrastructure, and restrict the flow to drain to the north of the track, across the track into the ditch that goes into the Duncan Canal. So, it's a lot of different issues that we need some assurance from the administration, or either Tom.
Your three minutes are up, Ms. Weathersby? Excuse me, your three minutes are up, sir.
Okay.
Any comments? Councilman Carroll?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Our Tom, or?
We got some answers.
Mr. Weathersby, please don't go in, thank you for coming up. First, let me say that there is a policy in place to be able to, before a development is developed. I have spoken probably to you and maybe a couple of more people within your organization about this. The last meeting we had was when they divided the property into six different parcels. We explained that when there is a development, it will be submitted to the public works, it will be submitted to planning, to co, all of these organizations before anything happens. Particularly with drainage, that will be the first thing. There have not been any submittal for anything. Now, maybe if the mayor tell you, you're going to believe him, but I'm telling you, nothing has been submitted.
Ouch.
Ouch is right, because we've had this conversation, and I've said that when it happens, that I would be, the organization will be the first to know about it. But nothing has happened. Nothing has been submitted to the director, nothing has been submitted to planning, nothing, nothing formally. Have there been some conversations? Probably, I've had conversations, everything from a home, from a building, from a warehouse, from this, for that, a plethora of things. But it doesn't mean that it is going forward, because things change, but nothing has been submitted, and I assure you, the people around there will get notified, and we will have a public hearing about the project. But nothing has happened. Nothing. So, when you say development, I'd like to know exactly, if you could be a little bit more specific about what has happened out there, because, hey, maybe you saw something I didn't, I haven't seen anything, I haven't been, received anything, but if you can, if you can say exactly what type of development, I would appreciate that.
Well, we just see the regular filling of the property, bringing different backfills and dirt and different stuff like that to the property, there's some type of pipes and different construction materials on the property, so it looks like it's being developed a little bit at a time without us having any inclusionness to know what's happening.
Yeah, and, and listen, I, I first want to say that I understand and appreciate the concern about it. I'm sure there have, may have been some piping or something on the ground, if a person owns it, there may have been something that they put there, but nothing, nothing from a submittal of a plan has taken place. Have they maybe put some piping on the ground? Maybe, I haven't seen that far back on the property, but nothing has been submitted as a formatted plan to do something out there, if, when.
So it's no permits or nothing issued by the city at this point?
As far as I know, if it is, Mr. Snire would have informed me, the administration would have informed me, but unless it happened today, I have not received anything. So, again, I appreciate it, and, you know, you, I don't have a problem you asking me, but I'm just saying, I just want to let everybody else know, this is what I committed to, this is what I will do, and let's, let's just keep our conversation or communication in place, and I would appreciate that.
Absolutely. Communication is key.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Vernon?
Yes, sir.
Ashley, you're all going to agree with me, because I'm going to agree with Councilman Carroll.
Oh, wow.
The property, he's correct, the property owner has just been dumping the sand, the soil, whatever you want to call it, in preparation for a project he's obviously coming, like Councilman Carroll said, to develop eventually. Now, like Councilman Carroll, I'm not aware of the pipes. I, I mean, is he laying pipes, then dumping soil?
Well, usually.
Or is he putting construction material out there, out there?
So, so it looks, it appears that they are gearing up for a construction site, that's so.
Okay, so we are going to.
Kind of like with the Wester Street.
I'm not going to name the property owner, but I'm, we're going to reach out to him tomorrow, and we're going to find out, we'd like to know exact, look, there's no law against him dumping pro, dumping soil on his property. So he, and I understand, look, I understand the concerns of the neighborhood in District 1 that you want to know, so we're going to reach out to him and say, look, I mean, you continue to do it, we've got to know some kind of an, some kind of, you know, where you're going with this, what's your, your timeline, what are you planning on doing? Because now you're starting to put, besides your soil, we're getting reports, and we'll go check it, not that we don't believe you, but we've got to go check it before we tell him this, you're putting construction material out there. So, correct, there is nothing that he submitted, but that doesn't ease the fears of any resident of the neighborhood, nor the residents of all of District 1, or look, for the whole city of Kenner, we'd like to, the city of Kenner administration along with the council would like to know what you're doing, or what you're preparing to do. Now, look, he could say, we're going to submit when we submit, but it'd be a lot better for him to go ahead and tell us what we're doing, and I think he will, because we want to have a project that goes there that's going to be acceptable, right? We don't need something that start being a problem. So, we'll get back with you, I have your number, Deborah might have a few things that she wants to weigh in with, but we'll work together with Councilman Carroll to get a response to you, and do some type of community meeting, even if he just wants to do something small.
Appreciate that.
No problem.
Mr. Weathersby, good to see you again.
Likewise.
So, Mr. Tom's one step ahead of them, see, he's very, he's very concerned about this property like we all are, because it was, it's one of the last, it's the largest last remaining undeveloped track, and it has some impact on drainage depending upon what happens. So what, what Shrinor has done is he's gone and bought an onsite survey, as well as LiDAR, which is, I call it magic, but you know, it's like overhead, it, you actually know what the original existing, exactly, the original existing conditions are. So no matter how much field gets dumped in there, the minute they come and they apply for something, he can look and say, okay, well, this is three feet above where it's supposed to be, for us to approve your permit, you're going to have to move it, or for us to approve your permit, you're going to have to show us drainage. So, I understand that there's sort of incremental mission creep with additional dirt appearing, but he knows what the basic existing condition was, and that was part of something we did a couple of years ago, I want to say, because we saw this happening, like we, you know, I think you and I had the conversation, but where was the original drainage, and did it originally run under the apartments nearby and all that? So, he's really done all the tools he can, considering that we don't actually have a pending application, but the minute there is a pending application, we're going to be able to say, well, you have to put this back to the existing conditions, or you have to get, you know, permission to add the fill in this location, so. And, and as everyone else has said, obviously, the community will have to be involved in whatever this is.
Yeah, and just to add on that, Mr. Weathersby, I have had a conversation two weeks ago with the property owner, nothing specific, other than his intentions to reach out to Mr. Tom, the director of public works, to start a conversation with him, because there are some things, from the owner, from the engineer's standpoint, that, that obviously they have to talk about before he moves forward, because it wouldn't make any sense if there's going to be a problem. So, you know, thank you for the concern, please, please let all of us know if you see other things happening, and we'll be able to stay on top of it immediately. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
If you would state your name and your street for the record, please, you'll have three minutes.
Barbara Soniat, Pollock Place, Kenner, Louisiana. I'm addressing the same issue Mr. Weathersby's just addressed. The comment, nothing has been submitted. I think something should have been submitted. 20 acres of trees were cut from that property. Something should have been submitted. You can't go back and replant those trees. How long should it take to get answers to questions that are raised by citizens of Kenner regarding development in their community? Perhaps the council might want to consider looking at a policy about that. Transparency, environmental justice, I really want you to think about that. I want to take you on a historical journey. December 5th, 2019, we came before this council asking the exact same questions about those 20 acres over two years ago. If that developer can do, I see a road there, I see gravel, I see a gate that's locked, there's stuff going on, on that property. If that prop, that developer can do that without having a permit, and it's okay, because he hasn't submitted a plan, I'm sorry, that is a problem, that is a huge problem. Back in November 5th, 2020, we asked you, we specifically asked, to requested an environmental impact study for the development on Reverend Richard Wilson Boulevard. This is November 5th, 2020. Before any further clearing or construction is done on the property. Additionally, we are requesting a status report on plans for eliminating the eyesore that remains on Old Kenner School. Thank you, we appreciate that. But we're still concerned about we get the same answers, two, over two years later, when the developer tells us, we'll tell you. I'm sorry, that's not acceptable, you have to be more proactive. We elected you to represent us, to present, prevent people from coming into our community. You know, we have generations of families who've lived there, we deserve answers to our questions. We are concerned about the developments there, the AP clay, we've raised questions about what's happening there, Buddy Lawson gym. You know, don't patronize me by saying, as soon as we know, we'll tell you. It's your jobs to know, we elected you to know, we elected you to be able to respond to our concerns. Two years is just too long to not know what's happening in our community. You know, give us an environmental study. Those trees being cut, that has affected the wind damage. You know, my dad put a roof on my house that has withstood all kinds of storms, it was blown off, and I don't know if those, you're cutting those trees is why, my grandmother's house, a tree fell on it. We had a strong community, we want to keep a strong community, and we need you, we need you to respond proactively to our concerns. Environmental justice.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara, your three minutes are up, thank you. Ms. Stacy Alessandro?
Thank you. Stacy Alessandro, 3309 Chateau Boulevard. So, I have three things. The first one is something I've been meaning to ask you guys, if y'all would consider a change to the policy that says that the citizens who come up to speak have to give our home address. Nobody else who speaks in this room has to give their home address, and I was just thinking that maybe we could just give the district that we live in in Kenner, for y'all to maybe consider that.
I'll respond to that when you finish.
Thank you. The second thing is, I just want to reiterate that this sexual harassment policy is very important. I will not come in favor of, and not just to put you guys on notice, I would not be in favor of another deferment. This is something super important, I hope y'all can put aside any differences that you may have, and come together and work on a solid plan. So, please do that, I'm, I'm super in favor of that. The thing that I really came here initially to speak about is, kind of going back to something that happened in the past, back when we had the garbage wars in 2020, Mr. Romelli was cited with 22,000 litter citations for having his carts out, we were having the garbage wars back and forth. He felt like that was being done in retaliation, so he sued Mayor Zahn in his personal capacity and the city for those violations. It went to federal court, it was a federal lawsuit, and I can't believe I'm going to say this for the third time tonight, the judge said, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. And so, subsequent to that, the city decided to go ahead and settle with Mr. Romelli. So, you guys went into executive session behind closed doors, and y'all agreed to pay him $215,000 taxpayer money. Now, subsequent to that, I mean, yeah, there was some depositions taken in a separate lawsuit that Mr. Romelli has against the city in district court. During those depositions, it was revealed that you guys were told, if I'm saying anything incorrect, can you guys, please correct me, if I say anything wrong, I want to make sure. It was revealed that you guys were told that the settlement, the money, the $215,000 was for money we already owed Mr. Romelli. So, what happened was, and we found this out in the depositions, Mr. Romelli was given a check that said $215,000 CPI on the memo line, he refused that check. The city gave him another check, and he's, I think he still has the first check that didn't say that, because the settlement agreement actually says that this money has nothing to do with the other lawsuits, we're being sued for that CPI money, we're still being sued for that. Y'all were told that's why y'all were paying the $215,000 of our money, but then in depositions, it's revealed that y'all were told something erroneous, so what are you guys going to do about that? What, are y'all going to get our money back? If anybody's got any questions, please let me know, but, please don't, I'm sorry, Councilman, I apologize.
Your three minutes are up.
I was going to say, we, it's an open matter, open litigation, they cannot comment on it at this time.
You can comment on it, if you want to.
I, I'm going to defer to our city attorney, what I was, Ms. Alessandro, I'm not trying to not answer the question, I'm trying, what you asked about, Mr. Brown brought up either the last meeting or two meetings before about addresses, and he has come up and just said his street, and, and that's kind of what I've been saying, Mr. Teff, I'm sure, and Mr. Morella, out of habit, or whatever, but that, basically, the districts find, you know, I don't think there's anything in, there's nothing that mandates what is said. So, if someone comes up and says, Jane Smith, John "Jane Smith, John Smith, Kenner, Louisiana," you know, it's, it's fine. If they, if they wish to give their address, I think that's their personal opinion. You're welcome. Councilman Wilmot, you have the floor?
Thank, thank you again, Mr. President. I just wanted to ask Ms. Sala, if we can, some of the neighboring jurisdictions, if we can get their policies, their council policies that may be regarding sexual harassment? I think that would be very helpful to all of us. And if, if they have any.
Right, and councilman, we, I, I don't know if we spoke briefly about this, but in Jefferson, for example, most of the, the problem is, the reason why you can't find it is because most of them adopt the administration's policy. Most of them don't have their individual ones. Like Jefferson adopted its own administration's policy.
Okay, and if you can, yeah.
But I'm saying that is what the problem is.
That would be very helpful, I think, to all of us if we can have that information with the, the neighboring jurisdictions do. And I know, we, we talked about that some time ago and I think that would be helpful. And also, I just wanted to mention one thing that I'm not sure if the typical person would know this. But if we, if, and when we do, and I'm sure we will, adopt a policy in the near future, does it have retroactivity effect or no?
I believe that's up to you, the council, on what you want in your legislation.
I would think procedural due process constitutionally does not allow it. And I, that's why, if you will, look that up and I'd appreciate that.
Not a problem, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Councilman Carroll? I'm sorry, councilman.
Thank you, thank you. And I, I wanted to comment to Ms. Soniat. I didn't wanna feel that she, she came up here and, and made her comments and that either I wasn't responding or we didn't respond to thank her for her comments and, and to agree with her. Yes, the, the, I'm gonna call it Morgan because that's what it was when we grew up playing there. The AP Clay Center, the, all of the gyms in our district are, are important to us. And we've had some conversations about that, that, that we have to have a plan. We have to do things to address it moving forward. Not to have a plan, not to have information of what it's gonna take is not correct. If the individual for the Morgan spot has put, made a road, a dirt road or whatever, laid down certain equipment, okay, maybe he's done that. But I, I just wanna say that we are watching this. And for what he's done, I, I do not see a structure beginning, anything sticking up or anything. I haven't even seen on the ground until Mr. Weathersby informed me. I will go take a look.